All right, good evening, everyone. Time's 5:32 PM. It is Tuesday, September 17th. I'm going to call the special city council meeting to order. Would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Rizzo?
Present.
Hyzer?
Here.
Zuniga?
Harris?
Here.
Parsley?
Here.
Tobias?
Present.
All right, six members present. We have a quorum. Next up is citizen comments. Is there anyone wishing to come forward? Seeing none, citizen comments is now closed. Next up, executive session. City council will now go into executive session to discuss items one, A through I pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, 552.074, and 551.087. I'm going to call this meeting back to order. There was no action taken during executive session. There will be no action taken now. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, we are adjourned. All right, good evening, everyone. The time is 7:12 PM. It is Tuesday, September 17th, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Rizzo?
Present.
Hyzer?
Here.
Zuniga?
Present.
Harris?
Here.
Parsley?
Here.
Tobias?
Here.
All right, all members are present. We have a quorum. Next up is approval of the minutes.
Mayor, go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes for city council meeting on September the 3rd and the regular special meeting as well for the same day to approve all the minutes.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Tobias, seconded by Mayor Protem that we approve the minutes. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. Two registered to speak ahead of time. First up is Betty Conley.
Good evening. My name is Betty Conley, and I want to just thank you, mayor and council city. I live at 87 Eagle Creek Drive in Kyle, Texas. I am the president of the Kyle Area Senior Zone that services seniors 50 years older and up and the disabled. And I wanted to thank you for the agenda items on aging and the disabled that are on the agenda tonight, and I would like to ask that they be moved up, Agenda Item 27, 28, and 31, please. Thank you and have a blessed day.
All right, thank you. Next up is Paul Hill.
May I proceed?
Yes.
Awesome. Sorry, in court, we have to ask for permission to speak. Hello, everyone. I'm Paul Hill. I know most, if not all, of you. I'm here because I saw that redistricting is on the agenda today, and I'm a huge redistricting nerd and advocate. I have very strong opinions about how districts should be drawn and why. The main point that I would like to make today is to, I would like the city to consider getting rid of at-large districts and going to a six-one system. I very strongly believe that the city is best served when we have a diversity of lived experiences and a diversity of geographic realities. You know, I know that people on this council talk about the east-west divide all the time, and we have excellent advocates for the east side, but there is no district that is solely east of 35. There's not even a district that's solely east of the railroad. And I think it is very, very important to ensure through districting that we are bringing voices from all over the city to counsel. And as you are considering redistricting and what these lines mean to the people that live in those districts, I also would encourage you to ask yourself, what does this bring to the city? What good does this do for the city? What good does it do to have three at-large seats plus the mayor's at-large seat, four at-large seats in control of council, no matter who holds them? And that's not a comment on any specific person in any of those seats. I have a pretty good relationship with all of you, and I like all of you, and you've all been great advocates for the city, in my opinion. But I think it's important to do the most good that we can going forward, and I think that a six-one system, where you have six single-member districts that each represent a different part of Kyle, would best represent the diversity of lived experiences and the diversity of people who live in Kyle and bring that to the body that oversees the city itself. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That's all the citizen comments forms I have. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward?
Good morning. My name is Yvonne Flores-Cale. For the record, I wrote on my hand because there's no agendas. And so if there's any way that you guys could print a few more agendas, that would be really great. I do have one at home. I just didn't pick it up on my way out. So I just want to say thank you, guys, for the website. Going to the meetings and looking up the meetings is probably 100 times easier, so I appreciate that. Following up to what the last speaker said regarding Agenda Item Number Five, I have a lot of concerns regarding resident participation. I saw in the backup material, I think it was halfway down under, like, comments during the hearings that residents will be able to come and speak. My hope is, as a panel, you guys will choose instead to have a commission of residents so they can come and give you their thoughts, and not just during three minutes of speak time, but during the whole process. I would, after looking at the backup information, it's clear that there is a disparity within our city. I am a little concerned that you're using 2020 numbers instead of more recent numbers. I think there's a disparity of about 15,000 residents between 2020 and 2023. According to the city's website, there's approximately 62,500 residents as of last year. So I think in 2020, it showed somewhere in the 40,000s. So if that could be addressed as well, that would be appreciated. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments period. It's now closed. All right, next up is agenda order. Does anybody have a request to move any items around?
Mayor, we could bring up 27, 28, and 31.
Okay.
A second.
Is there anyone else? Any other items? All right, then we're going to move on to Agenda Item Number Three. Consider approval of a resolution appointing the Kyle Annual Youth Advisory Council members for the 24, 25 term. And we will move those other items up. They'll just come right after the consent agenda.
Mayor, real quick, I was wondering if IT could double-check the website, if you don't mind, because it's not showing the agenda items on the website for tonight.
Yeah, the meeting is not showing.
If IT could just look into that, if they don't mind.
I do have the agenda on my laptop. It's up.
Okay.
So I have that.
Good evening, council. I have an appointment for you tonight. It's the Kyle Area Youth Advisory Council, otherwise known as KAYAC. They are going to start their new year for this year. We're excited. Just very quickly, for anyone who doesn't know, KAYAC is a 16-member committee of students aged 14 through 18. They're charged from council to look at the youth perspective on many community items and items coming before council and give recommendations on items and things throughout the community. They meet monthly, and their, the board terms runs the school year, so it's September through May. Every year, the council does a full appointment of a full new KAYAC because seniors roll off, and so they have a whole new year to start. We have 15, 13 that are returning, so we'll have a very experienced KAYAC group this year, and two new ones, and then one open seat that are up for appointment tonight. Apart from every, all the work that you can see on the presentation that they'll be doing, we have two very specific extra items of emphasis for KAYAC this year that we're excited about. One is the Parks Master Plan that you all know is being updated. We have a tremendous amount of citizen input from all ages during that plan, but I've talked to our Parks staff, our new Parks Director, and then StanTech, who is leading the efforts of that plan, and they have said that historically, that age group, which is a critical age group to get the input from, is hard to get good input from. So we'll be working very closely with our KAYAC board, not only to get their recommendations and their opinions, but also to work with their fellow students and fellow kids their age to get as much input for the Parks Master Plan as possible. So that's exciting. And then the other thing we're going to focus on this year is we want to take, while they do look at items in the community and things around them for youth input, we want to look at the actual council agenda and take upcoming items that you all are going to look at over the next, you know, coming meetings, and bring the items that are youth-related to them, and get their actual recommendations and opinions on those items, and then funnel that to you guys so that for those items that are youth-oriented, you guys will see their recommendations from the board. So it's an exciting year for them. We have a great group of kids that are returning and two new ones, and one open seat for anybody that wants to apply. We still have an opening. So staff's recommendation is approval of all the appointments, and I'm here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Elizondo. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I'm happy to see several of my students there. That's all. It's exciting to have them there.
Just talking about some of the great work that they've done. If you look at our park downtown, you look at the placate there, there was a recommendation from the KAYAC group to have an all-inclusive park, so definitely an important part of our city, and it's important to get feedback and for, from all our residents, even our younger residents. So, I mean, how does the city shape is when everybody gives input, so it's important. So thank you for what you all are doing with the KAYAC program.
All right, anyone else? Motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Three.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Hyzer, seconded by Councilmember Parsley that we approve Agenda Item Three. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up, Agenda Item Four. Consider approval of a resolution to reappoint Julia Fishback to Seat Two, Daisy Santos to Seat Four, and Julianne Orgish to Seat Six of the Parks and Rec Board for two-year terms expiring September 2026.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. David Lopez, Director of Parks and Recreation. For tonight is the reappointment of three of our Park Board members, Julia Fishback, Daisy Santos, and Julianne Orgish. These three members are highly active on the Park and Recreation Board and make great contributions. They're all very excited about participating in the master plan process, as well as launching several capital projects and new operational standards. The recommendation from staff this evening is to support the reappointment of all three members.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lopez. Anybody have any questions or comments? Councilmember Harris.
I, when I was on Parks Board, I worked with all three of these people, and I have got to say they are outstanding and committed to our community and committed to their purpose on the Parks Board. I think they will be excellent.
All right, anyone else?
Just like to say thank you to these two for serving on these and for wanting to serve again, and also to the kids in KAYAC for serving.
All right, motions?
Mayor?
Oh, Councilmember Tobias, sorry.
Sorry, it's okay. Yeah, we went through the reappointment process, and we got to hear, I got to hear a lot about these three individuals and their desire to continue to serve on this board. Again, we also was able to speak with Ms. Santos. She's the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Board. Gathering from her, she's very excited of Mr. Lopez coming on board. She knows that there's going to be a new comprehension plan that's going to be coming up for our parks, and all three of them are going to be very eager to be able to give some comment and feedback, so. And also, knowing that they all come to the meetings, they are very fully dedicated and committed to their seat, and that's why I was happy to go ahead and make the nomination as well to keep them on board for another two more years, because I think their input's going to be very vital to our Parks Board.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, now we'll do a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Harris.
I would love to have the opportunity and privilege of reappointing our three Daisy, Daisy Santos, Julia Fishback, and Julianne Orgish to the Parks and Recreation Board.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Harris, seconded by Councilmember Tobias that we approve Agenda Item Four. Is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Six to zero. Thank you. All right, next up is Agenda Item Number Five. Receive a report, hold discussion, provide staff direction regarding the initial assessment of city, cities, city of Kyle City Districts from Bickerstaff, Heath Delgado, Acosta LLP. Ms. Alcorn Reed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amy Alcorn Reed, City Attorney, for the record. A couple months ago, you guys directed the city manager to look into redistricting, redrawing our district boundaries for our three single-member districts. And then in June, you approved a contract with Bickerstaff, Heath Delgado, Acosta to perform that service. Tonight, Kabi Caputo with Bickerstaff is going to present his initial assessment and talk you through some next steps. So I'm going to go ahead and pass it off to Kabi. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Kabi Caputo, as I said, from the Bickerstaff firm. We're doing your initial assessment, which doesn't involve redrawing any lines or anything right now. We're just talking about, do you have to? I won't bury the lead. Yes, you do. But I'm going to go through the materials, I'm going to go through some of it kind of quickly. I wanted to have more information in there than we're really going to discuss tonight, just so the public is seeing, you know, a lot of information about what's going to go on, because this is obviously a fairly public process. So, is this control? Look at that. Yeah, I'm already failing. Oh, wait, there it goes. Okay. It's a little delay. All right, so there's three legal standards that we need to look at in redistricting to start with. The first one comes out of the Constitution, out of the Fourteenth Amendment, and it's the principle that the courts have defined as one person, one vote, which means basically that the districts need to be roughly equal size. That's sort of the first and paramount thing, because it is a constitutional standard. The second one is under the Voting Rights Act. Section Two, we can't adopt an election system that discriminates against voters based on race, ethnicity. So we have to confirm that we're not discriminating. And then there's a bit of a complicating factor in law. There's a case from the 90s, Shaw versus Reno, where the Supreme Court basically said you shouldn't focus exclusively on race or ethnicity, that that creates potentially a Fourteenth Amendment constitutional problem on the other side. But last term, in the Allen versus Milligan case and several others, several states tried to argue that the provisions of Section Two, which say you can't discriminate based on race or ethnicity, which technically require you to look at the race or ethnicity of the voters, that that itself was unconstitutional. And the Supreme Court in Allen versus Milligan said, no, it's not. That it's okay to look at race. It can't be the primary focus. Everything can't be driven by guaranteeing, you know, certain racial outcomes or ethnic outcomes in the election system, but it is something we can legally look at. So that was a concern at some other clients I had back at the beginning of this redistricting cycle in '21 and '22. We didn't really know where the law was going to end up on that, and everybody proceeded along the way we normally do, and luckily, the Supreme Court backed that up. So, so those are the primary principles we've got to focus on. That's really what we're talking about there. Oh, the standard is deviation can't be more than 10%. And we're going to go through some examples. That's a top-to-bottom deviation, meaning the biggest district and the smallest district, their deviations from the standard size, the equal boundary size, can't be more than 10%. So.
Is that total population, registered voters, or?
It's total population, because this is the constitutional standard of one person, one vote, which is strictly on total population numbers. The voting rights analysis under Section Two is more focused on voters and voting populations, and we'll kind of go through some of that here. To give examples of the deviation, this would be a theoretical district conveniently with 10,000 people per single-member district. There's four of them. And you see that one of them is 10% too big. It's 11,000 people instead of 10,000, which would be the ideal size. And then one of them is only 8,000 people, so it's 20% too small. This would, equals out to a 30% top-to-bottom deviation. So when we get to your data, we'll look at that and discuss that. You only have three districts, which makes this a little bit easier. Okay, the, several limitations on what we do. First of all, we need to use the census data. I know we're out of census, you know, a ways off the census at this point. I know you've had explosive growth here, but the courts have said unless you can come up with a system that is as reliable, and I'm putting that in air quotes, as reliable as a census, you must use the census data. And again, we're mostly focused on total population, but we do need voting age population, and we need race and ethnicity data, which we get through the census through this census file, PL 94171.
And using the census, a couple years ago, we went and went through the process because we thought the numbers were wrong, and we weren't able to get that corrected. So how does that really show us what our number, true numbers are, when we know our numbers are higher than what the census last time gave us?
Did the Census Department correct the data or update the data?
No, they didn't.
Okay. I mean, that's, the problem's going to be getting the data broken out in a way that we need it, where we have racial and ethnic statistical information. Some clients we've had have used things like utility connections, because you know how many connections you have. You have a number that your city uses for how many people per house or utility connection. And so you can use that data. It takes a little while to calculate it all, but that doesn't give us any race or ethnicity data. It also doesn't give us any voting age population data. So it becomes difficult to use it, and if you want to go down that path, we should probably have a conversation in closed session to start with about the legal risks involved, and we can certainly have that discussion back out in public. But I would prefer to go into that information with you privately, so you know what I'm, what we're thinking. But for right now, we're using the census data because that's what the law says. And again, I think a lot of cities felt like, and several, as you did, established that the census undercounted pretty substantially in some cases. So there's other things we can do, and I'll talk about that when we get closer to analyzing your data, to try to account for the fact that we know there's, clearly, there's way more population here just from growth, but there was more population here under the census even, from the 2020 census. So sort of the question we just talked about, to determine the one-person, one-vote standard, we use total population. To look at the voting rights issues, we use voting age population. So under Section Two, we're not allowed to discriminate on the basis of race or language minority status. What we have to avoid are two different principles. One's called cracking, and one's called packing. Cracking is where you take the minority voter districts and you just distribute them out into all the other population, and it disperses and minimizes, dilutes their voting capability. Packing is the opposite, where you say, well, we're just going to put all of them into one district. And that way, they can't influence any other districts, they just get to influence the one. We obviously don't want to do that, and when we develop plans, however process we end up using for that, that's going to be primary things we look at, is that we do not want to over-populate them, and we don't want to under-populate them with the minority voters, to the extent you have minority voters, which the data shows you have plenty of. Okay, as we talked about, the Shaw versus Reno line of cases ending last term with the Supreme Court, it's not supposed to be the primary factor, but it has to be something we look at. We have to narrowly tailor the plan so that we're not looking at it any more than we absolutely have to. There's a thing that comes out of this where people say, well, that district looks funny. And there are social scientists that have tried to come up with a statistical analysis and a mathematical number that says this district is too bizarrely shaped to be considered a compact district, which is what the law requires. Those are difficult to work with, and I haven't really encountered it. You know, the case law that's out there is they take some population over here, and then they have, they just go down a road, and they come over, like, across the highway and pick up some population over here. That's a bizarrely shaped district, like a dumbbell, or just running all over the place with fingers going out and just grabbing population everywhere. Those are the kinds of things the courts have said, that's evidence that there's something going on here that shouldn't be, and they would go deeper into it. So we try to draw the lines as best we can, and we're going to talk in a minute about what we do when we're trying to draw. Section Five of the Voting Rights Act used to require preclearance by the Department of Justice. That no longer applies. The Supreme Court struck that down in 2013. Congress has never gotten around to reauthorizing it, so it's not a concern we focus on, but we still actually like to look at the old legal standard from that. The standard that the federal government used was called.
Sir, what about odd-number districts? Because in odd-number, you can't have irregular, that's more hidden than in even-number symmetrical districts. Has that been kind of studied?
Not that I know of.
Because 3-5 could be very irregular, but a 4-6 is more symmetrical. So that's something to consider.
Yeah. Yeah, and I heard the speaker earlier about wanting to change your election system, and that's something you all can discuss. I'll defer to the city attorney, but I think you would need a charter election to do that. So that's something you guys can certainly consider.
We do, we do need to underscore that. I was waiting for that.
Yeah.
So we don't have any power to change the number of single-member versus at-large or terms or any of that. That's all very specifically stated out in the charter, which we're getting ready to have a charter review commission coming up soon, so it'll be up to them to look at the data that we provide and make that recommendation back to us.
Something they can explore.
Yeah, for sure it is.
So anyway, what we don't want to have is any kind of retroaggression. So basically, if you've got, like you do right now, you've got two districts that are basically majority Hispanic. If we were to redraw and you came up with one, somebody would need to explain why you only have one when you used to have two. And there's legitimate arguments and positions that can be taken about, well, the populations have moved and things like that, but the data would show that. So we still use this standard to say, are we creating a Section Two problem for ourselves by reducing or limiting the number of minority districts below what we currently have? So we try not to do that in general. The benchmark is to take the 2020 census data, old, I know, probably not accurate, I know, and superimpose it on your last plan, which unfortunately is from 2011. So we're using old data on an even older plan to come up with what you're going to be looking at. So we'll talk in a minute about some ways to factor in some stuff to adjust for that. So the next step for the council, once we get past the initial assessment stage, would be for us to come back and have you adopt a resolution or an ordinance. Again, I'll give it to the city attorney to figure out the proper method to do that, where you adopt the legal criteria that are going to be applied when we redistrict. We give some examples here on this slide. You want to use identifiable boundaries. You want to maintain communities of interest, potentially whole neighborhoods. So you don't want, like, one neighborhood split up into three different districts if you can help it. You want to use whole voting precincts if you can. That's a thing that's a little bit outside our control, because the county runs the voting precincts, but we do overlay the voting precincts onto the map and see what we're doing in that regard. You're allowed to base the plan on the existing districts. You don't have to start from scratch, so you can say, well, we have these districts, we're just going to move some lines around and readjust. It's perfectly legitimate. That's a criteria that you can, a criterion you can adopt. Again, the districts have to be relatively equal size. That's a legal standard. We don't really have any leeway on that one. The districts that we draw need to be compact and contiguous. Again, we try to focus on that as we work on it. One factor that you guys can consider and think about and talk about is whether you want us to focus to some degree on keeping the incumbents in their districts. The courts have said that's perfectly legitimate. That district elected you. That district should be allowed to continue to elect you until they choose not to, and so we shouldn't move you guys into the same district. That being said, I had a client that I just worked with earlier this year, and literally two of their members live across the street from each other, and it was not possible to figure out a way to draw that to where they didn't end up in the same district. Also, sometimes incumbents will say, you know what, I'm not going to run again, so don't worry about trying to keep me in my district. You can put my neighborhood into whatever district it needs to go into. So there's legitimate reasons on both sides of that discussion. And again, that's really a discretionary thing for y'all to look at. And then we need to narrowly tailor the plan so that we're not focused exclusively on the race or ethnicity of the people in the plan. So we will develop an appropriate instrument for you all to adopt with this list of criteria. You can go through it and decide, you know what, let's not worry about incumbents or, you know, let's not worry too much about the voting precincts. And we can, you know, that's legitimately something within your, your control. So what we want to do is we need to build a record of what you're doing, this is a good beginning to it. This is in case you get, you know, litigation against you. We want to have everybody aware of the steps you've taken. You need to be advised about what the legal obligations are, we're doing that starting tonight. We continue to do that throughout the process. You adopt criteria that reflect these traditional redistricting principles. And then when we do draw, we're focused on that. And we kind of evaluate plans based on those criteria. We don't get too hung up on, on things outside those criteria. And this is, you know, basically the same sort of thing. We do want to avoid truly bizarre districts. Bizarre is sometimes in the eye of the beholder. So the process is, we're at the first step, initial assessment. The next step would be for you to adopt the criteria and the guidelines. The next step would be to develop illustrative plans, and that can be done a number of different ways. We can go off, me and my GIS technician, and just come back with, hey, here's a plan that fits. And then you guys can tell us all the things we did wrong, like, hey, you split this neighborhood, or, you know, why is this incumbent putting up against that incumbent? Those are the kind of things you legitimately look like.
To make sure I understand the dynamics of the question that's before the council. There's one question that I know everyone has on their mind, which is how many single member versus adding more single member districts? Which we couldn't even call that until August of next year for a November bond. So this is a redraw, I guess we could call special election.
Well, you could call an election.
We could do a lot, but I mean, most likely, the natural course would be convene the commission. 2025, they make their recommendations on charter amendments, we take that to the voters in November. Then the voters give us our answer, then we have to redraw the lines.
Yes.
So if we go through this process right now, where we say, all right, they're a little out of balance, we need to redraw the lines following this, the question for the council is, you know, are we going to do all of that work and redraw the two, four and six districts following this process, which we need to be doing, only to then, at the same time, be going to the voters to change it, which means we'll have to rip all the work up and start it over? So is that right, Amy? Am I, am I saying that right in terms of the, the two different paths?
Right, so under our charter, we are required to have a charter review commission every five years. That is this coming year. Charter review commission is required to have six months to do their work. So logically, we are not likely to get a charter amendment up before the voters before November of next year.
Okay, so if we give, if we go through that process, is there, do we want to go through this process of redrawing the two, four, six lines now? Or do we want to wait and go ahead and kick off the charter review process? Let them make a decision as to what they think, and then we decide what we think, then take it to the voters, then go through this process one year? Is, are we a foul of the law by having to wait until after the charter?
I think that's a legitimate consideration, especially considering that the next election in which we will have single member districts up for election is in 2026. So we would have time to do it.
Interesting, okay. Twenty-five is our at-large.
Twenty-five is all at-large.
Oh, interesting, okay, yeah. Because that was the point I was going to make, was that if your system's out of balance, you do need to fix it before the next election at which any of those districts appear. But if they don't show up till 26, potentially you've got time to get all that done.
And also, something to think about, Mayor, the population itself could be a big difference between now and two years from now.
Well, is there, is there no way for us to use updated numbers outside of 2020? Even if we have some time to put together our own process?
We, we can look at what that would take. Again, the difficulty is getting it at the block level, the difficulty is getting it with race and ethnic and age components, which we need to do for plan drawing purposes. But, you know, the census does their little, you know, updates every year until the next real census.
I think...
But those have been really inaccurate.
I think our population has changed more dramatically from 2020 to 2025 than from 2020 back to 2010. So it's like, it's almost like a whole census worth of population change in the five years.
Not only that, but the growth patterns are massive in some areas and very slight in some other areas.
And so I think one of the things you can do, and I've seen this done in other cities, is we know where it's going to grow, and so we can adjust the districts based on knowing, hey, this, in the next couple of years, we know Lennar is building 500 houses here. So we can know when we're balancing our districts, maybe that one should be a little bit on the low end because it's going to get bigger, and the other one should be a little bit on the high end because it's not.
Yeah, that's the normal way we try to account for growth since the census or projected future growth is get with your planning staff, figure out where the growth has occurred, figure out where the growth is going to come. And we underpopulate or overpopulate districts based on that. If we know this area is not going to grow, we can overpopulate that district within the 10% deviation. And if we know there's areas that have grown massively and are going to continue to grow, we can underpopulate those in order to, we still got to get the 10% standard in there, but, you know, you can have several thousand difference between them based on the old data, which is not ideal.
And I would just say that, Mayor, I think you're using this plan assessment. This guy can get us the numbers that we need for the charter review committee, because that's not something they could figure out on their own, right? So they, it would still be a process where they still have to find the numbers somewhere and do it according to the law.
Well, it depends on what you're, if the charter review is just going to put on the ballot, should you change the election system? Or if they're going to put on the ballot, do you want to change the election system and adopt this one? You know, where they actually would have a plan drawn from it, and I don't know.
Yeah, I think our recommendation would be for the charter to stick with the number of single member district versus at-large districts, and for a specialist such as Kabi or someone else who does these redistricting all the time to come in and give us advice on how to draw the districts, especially because if the charter lays out the districts, then we have to amend it every time we grow.
Well, I'm in favor of that plan, but I think that, that may not be what some of y'all are wanting. So if y'all, if you're eyeing, we want to change, change our election system, I think we're going to need to make sure that that is clear as to, to a variety of groups as we're moving through this process or not. We're not going to be able to just hold back on what we want to do and wait for the time to make that vote because we have to go through this process, that's really all I'm saying.
I just have a question, so are you talking about whether we want to change to all single member districts and get rid of the at-large districts?
If we, if we wanted to do that, it's a different path than what this is going to be.
Or if we want to have more single member districts and a couple of at-large still.
Changing, changing the election process or our, our form of government essentially requires going to the voters, and there's six months of charter review commission to go through that, then calling, waiting, then we have to redraw the lines. Can't draw the lines now if we're going to add more districts.
I mean, you could, if you wanted to spend the money, you could draw lines just to show what it might look like, but it wouldn't be the plan that's in effect, right?
I think it's just hard to, to take any decisions right now if we don't have updated data. And to be honest with you, we have grown so much from 2020 to now, and that will make a really a big impact on how you just draw the lines.
Yep, that was kind of my point about the population growth, to see where we're at. Because again, there's so many different factors we've got to look into. What's going to be developed, what's not going to be developed? And then if we were to go with single districts, okay, dividing it up three and three, east, west, or however we do it, north, south, you know, you've got to look at the whole city itself.
Yeah, for sure. I redistricted the city of Georgetown the last two times around, and like you guys, they straddle I-35. And so they made a strong effort last time in 2010 to use the highway as more of a demarcation point and have districts on one side and on the other. This last time in 2020, they decided that that wasn't as important a requirement anymore, and they have a couple of districts that do sort of straddle the highway. So I'm familiar with that kind of concept as well, and there's, again, sort of discussions either way. That's where we really defer to y'all, because you know the politics of the area, you know the voters. I'm just a guy from Austin.
Yeah, well, the, the way the districts were drawn by the former commission, former groups that put the current plan in place, their east-west rhetoric was inverted from ours. And these were east folks as well, but they did not want to have districts that were just represented on one side or the other, which is why District Six goes in towards Silverado, Spring Branch area almost, you know, and, and which is why District Two is the, that was all done intentionally. So it'd be, I think it'd be worth our while to hear, because a lot of those folks still live in the community, why they did it that way. But if, you know, I'm in favor of going forward with this plan, but it just means that it's going to make it harder for us to spend that time thinking about if we want more single member districts or if we're happy with the current system of government.
And I think the original architects of this was because they wanted, they liked the idea of having four people they could reach out to that represent the districts, because you have the three at-large and the single member district. So eliminating that, you now only have one person representing you. So I think that's what the early conversations were. I know I talked to a past council member about this, and that's kind of what their thought process was, having four people that represent them, not just one.
There's, there's trade-offs, it's a good, it's a good, it's a good discussion, there's trade-offs both ways. Right now, everyone in the city can vote for five people, which is a supermajority of this board. You get four at-large plus one that represents your area. If you, if we add more single member districts, then each person gets to vote for less folks. And so what, which way do you, do you want to say, we want to make sure that the majority of people get to have the majority of the vote, the voice or, or not? And there's debates and arguments on both sides of that discussion. I don't, I don't have a, a thought. I, I've loved the, the way the founders set this all up in the charter. In particular, there's so much thought about the districts two, four and six, and when their elections are, and one, three and five, and how that coincides with the mayor. It's like, there is a lot of intentionality behind it, the three-year terms, which I've watched two-year terms and four-year terms all around, and they all wish they had three-year terms. If you're going to stay on, you're going to be in a presidential election one year, and you're going to be in a, an election where no one is there in a different time. And so it creates that, that sort of churn to make sure that there's diversity. I've also, when I was first elected, there were five of us that were on the, that lived on the east side. Five out of seven in 2016 lived east of I-35. And you think, well, that's good, but it was a majority white born. At the same time, there were five members that were, that were Caucasian. And so there's plenty, you can look at it from a lot of different ways. And I think you can argue for or against it in any particular way. Since then, there have been more folks living on the west, but much more literally our three at-large or two Hispanic and one white, and our three single members are two Hispanic, are two white and, are two Hispanic and one white. So it's, it's, which is just the way the three districts shape up. We have two districts that are majority Hispanic and one that's, so I feel like the, the system that we have works, and so I'm afraid to break it. But I was telling Councilmember Harris, sometimes, when I first started, I want to change everything, and now I don't want to change anything, so maybe I'm not the right person to make the call. But that's just the feedback.
Yeah, I mean, I think there, there are a lot of pluses and minuses. But when you have a lot, like at-large members, they're not always accountable to that specific district. And I've seen a lot of votes that are played where, you know, I could say, oh, well, you know, I'm, I'm not in, I'm not, you know, I'm in the minority vote. So there's a lot of excuses. So sometimes, if there's more accountability to that district, because they have that member that has to be responsible, that's living on that side of the physical barrier. And so I think that those are some of the, the things that maybe were not looked at, that they were going to have that kind of magnitude effect. But now that we're growing and we're, we're building everywhere, I think we could look at something like that and then see where, where would the charter review committee come back with recommendations? But I want them to have this information from this process because even if they decide they want all these member districts, we could end up in a situation where they're all bizarre because they're not directed. And I think this gives us good direction and, you know, understanding that you have to consider the congruency and the density and the compactness and stuff. So I, I like this because it feels safe. And then with the charter review committee, they could come back with, hey, I think you guys should explore this or keep it, keep it the way it is.
Well, we have like two months before we have to call the charter review committee. That's the problem with the timeline.
But we have to call the charter review committee anyway because it's time to update a bunch of ordinances and the things that we talked about in the past with financial stuff.
I, I understand, but this process is going to take time. So I'm, I'm, all I'm trying to do is make sure that we're not wasting our time. And there are no, going, because I think what brought this up initially was the fact that we had a pretty good idea that the 10% threshold is out of balance. So that there is a very legitimate purpose to what this process has for us, but it doesn't necessarily mean that, that we're going to be able to do both things at the same time.
Right, but I would just more of the opinion that a four-three system would be good to look at.
I'm, I'm certainly open to that.
I'm not saying get scared of all that, Lennar said a four-three, so you have some person in every quadrant. That, that's worth considering. You're not getting rid of the at-larges, everybody still has more representatives. But now we make sure every district has some time on the dais.
But then, to that point, because I'm not like opposed to do something like that, but then it makes me wonder if you get into a situation where you will be, and there is a mention, the cracking or fracturing situation. So having a four-two, we will have to figure out how to do the division of the lines in order to avoid that.
But it's very symmetrical now, right? Because you can do...
But you may, so you may have symmetry when you're talking about the acreage. Now, how is that going to affect when you talk about population? And then are you cracking or fracturing?
That's why I would like this study to continue so that we, we avoid that kind of stuff.
So how do we get to have updated information regarding ethnicity or population density in order to make, at least to give to the charter review committee some updated, so they can make informed decisions?
There are ways to, to estimate that are useful for sort of theoretical purposes, but maybe not ideal for actually adopting a plan, because it puts you at, at more risk that way. So, you know, we can certainly discuss that with your staff and with my GIS and demographic folks. Like I said, we've, we've done it, where we've gone in and used utility connections and gotten data out of it. It's just, there's some legal issues involved with all that. But there's, there's ways to do that, there's ways to look at housing starts, subdivision, you know, platting, that, you know, your developmental, develop, developmental department has that information. So I jumped ahead to the chart just to show that you are out of balance using the census data. You're probably 15,000 people bigger than this now. But, and where that population has been distributed is not known to the census, but again, there's ways to...
It's probably getting close to 20,000 people difference. It's like a whole half of this city added back into the...
Yeah, yeah, I was on city council in Cedar Park in the 90s, and we were doubling every 10 years, basically. So it's an interesting time to live, I'll say that. So what you have right now, District Two is overpopulated under the census by almost 1,900 people. District Four is underpopulated by almost 1,500 people, or a little over 1,500 people. And then District Six is almost exactly perfect. So you, it's interesting that under the census data at least, District Six sort of either grew symmetrically or the other two grew substantially differently because of, you know, your development patterns. So District Two is the biggest district, District Four is the smallest district, and you end up with a 21 and change percent deviation, which is beyond what the law allows. So before you hold another election, using the single member districts, you would want to correct that. And that's kind of the, the sum total of the discussion. You do have two majority, total population, majority Hispanic districts under the census data. This chart shows the voting age population, and you do have one district that is voting age population Hispanic, and another one that basically is, it's 49 and change. So it's basically a minority Hispanic district as well, or a majority Hispanic district. So those are the numbers that we know. We have some data in here that I included just because it's interesting. This is a thematic map that shows where the concentrations are of Hispanic population under the census data. So you can kind of, you all can judge this against what you actually know, because you may go, oh, that's all, that's totally wrong now, which is entirely possible. And then this just shows where African-American population would be. You don't have enough of it to make a single member district, so not as essential to analyze that. And that's kind of the, kind of the report. You do need to redistrict, you have some interesting opportunities, given that you don't have this system coming up again until 26. So I'm interested to see what you guys want to do on that front. We're happy to help you in any way we can on any of that process.
What do y'all think?
Well, just, just to give you another option, I mean, one is, you would just simply wait. If you wanted to put something on a charter election to see what the community wanted to do, and then we could redistrict at that time. Or if you would like to direct us to work with, with Bickerstaff to go through the process right now for the three districts. And then if you did decide, the community did decide to go to a different model, then we could update that data and go to the four district model, if that's what the community decided to do. So I think there's two ways to do it. I've heard a little bit of both sides of that argument up here, so it's, we're just looking for direction of how you want to proceed.
When I see the pockets on the maps, are those just undeveloped land areas?
Those are, those are areas that are not in the city, according to the...
Up there.
Yeah, one of, one, I think one of them, you may be annexing, or you have annexed. For purposes of this analysis, we didn't include it, but if we were to do plan drawing, we would include that annexed area as well and the census data associated with it. But yeah, you have several what we, what we call window panes where...
So they're not our voters, they can, they don't vote in our elections, right?
That's right, where there's holes like that. And like a lot of suburban cities, you're, you grow in a fairly irregular pattern. Which, which way do y'all want to go?
I mean, I would, I know we're not making the decision, but ultimately, you know, I'm in agreement with something Councilmember Zuniga said, and the four-two-one model. And going back to the drawing board with the data and making sure that next year the charter review committee has accurate data and staff has been able to provide information on... and staff has been able to provide uh, information on growth projections, you know, based on de, uh, planned development. You know, like, I mean, this is going to stick when we, when we do it. And it's going to, you know, outlive some of us living here in the city. So I want to make sure if we're going to shoot our shot here and do this, that we have um, the most uh, up-to-date information possible to make that decision. And what I mean, we, I mean, the, the, the charter review committee.
Just, just one way to think about it is if District Four is underpopulated and District Two is overpopulated, District Two has to shrink, District Four has to increase, which if we don't change the lines too much, all but guarantees that you're going to have the two of the three single members be elected from the east side. So it's just, you know, if you go to four, that doesn't, and you've got, where you've got two west side versus two east side, you're not making an impact on the dynamics of east-west. Everything else is at-large, citywide. So I think the natural process we're about to go through, unless we get radical with the way that we're approaching this, is going to bring about a, a high probability that two of the three single members are uh, east, east of I thirty-five, or at least east, I mean, you can see the lines, maybe, however you, there's no, un- Michael only has a, council member Tobias only has a section of residential. Most of what he has on the west side of that district is, is commercial and is going to continue to be commercial for a while, so.
But it, it still depends on the turnout, voter turnout, and it will make the races more competitive.
Oh, I, I, I think the opposite is true.
Right now, it's, the at-larges are not competitive.
Miguel, the, the one thing that I've been thinking about all day is when you look at the number, the total number of candidates that are running for the districts that would be chopped up to add in a, a third district, like that, I want to know, like, and I, there is no way of knowing, but that's concerning.
Well, the, so.
Just as a general thought, as to why in the last three elections, I believe Districts Two and Six have had a total of like four candidates, and two of them have been unopposed. Whereas you've had ten total candidates run for the, in the last two District Four elections. And, you know, obviously the at-large seats are the at-large seats, but.
So the city of Buta recently changed up there and they added single member districts, and they've had to cancel their last two elections. Because that, the places where they said, you have to come from here, there just wasn't much interest in participation in the government at that point. And so I, I've found that the at-large seats just historically have had like a three-to-one competitive, competitive race compared to the single members. And if the goal is the east-west, then you, you're not going to necessarily be able to guarantee more than two members, even if you go to four districts, you're not going to be able to guarantee more than two, which the data, because of District Four being smaller and District Two being larger population-wise, District Four has to grow, District Two has to shrink. We're, we're going to accomplish that with the current program we have in place. So I, I don't think that it, we're going to change our representation much. If we went to six, boy, that would change it. But there's a, that just means that you, if you live in the city of Kyle, you get to vote for two people, the mayor and your, your rep. So I, I don't, I don't see how that necessarily.
Do you want to go to six, all single members?
I want to change nothing. I think the system is, is, I can't think of a change that improves it. I can only think of changes that make it worse, or make it, it's just politics. And you know, it's just the, the talk and the rhetoric. But we, we, we've had, uh, you know, the way that it's currently set up and the fact that District Four has to gr- uh, grow in size and District Two has to shrink, virtually guarantees that you're going to have two eastern member, single member districts, uh, from the east side. I mean, I, am I, am I wrong? It, doesn't it seem like that's the way that it's going to go? Because I really want to put these guys to work, that's what I want to do. I want them to get us that data and so that we can go through a transparent and robust process to get those numbers equal. So our districts have equal representation of single members. But if we just want to change it, then we're going to need to wait and go through a charter process and then submit a question to the, the voters next November, whether they want to do that or not.
But does it concern you that right now we only have two council members really from the east side?
So I've lived the east of Kyle, I've lived the east of I thirty.
If I go next year, you got all, you got six.
Well, I, I think I already made the point that when I started under this system.
In a bad way, I'm just being realistic.
Miguel, though, is, is it about, is it about equal repr- representation east versus west? Or is it about having diversity and fairness? Which is it? Because like, those things are in conflict with one another based on what you're saying.
Five is a real barrier. So if you had four, I think that makes the most sense as our city is growing.
I'm okay with that. All right, hang on, let's look for some MP Tico.
All right, so, so here's what happens, is that when you bring it up to four, you have two on the west, two on the east.
Yeah.
And you still have the three at-large, so you're still in the same conundrum you have. You still have the four from the, uh, west side. But you're, but with that mentality, you're saying that the at-large seats, no matter what, are going to be west-side citizens. Uh, and, and that's kind of what you're saying, those three would be west-side. Because if you break it up to the four-three, well, four, four-two-one, then you're looking at, you know, four here and then two at-large. So you still have the two on the west, two on the east, and then the two at-large, you're saying are still going to be west-side representation. Well, I don't believe so. I think hopefully, eventually we'll get more people, uh, running for those at-large seats from the east side. But I'm, I'm just trying, I'm not advocating for either one.
I'm just, I'm saying that every, every, I'm, I'm just talking about. If we have four, then there's representation for every district is going to have to occur.
But you're still putting two on the, uh, wh- west and two on the east with your four-two-one.
Well, can I weigh in on that? Because I don't, I don't think you could draw two west-side districts. They'd be underpopulated and, and not within the ten percent deviation.
Yes.
Okay, so that's what I, that's what I need to know then.
Yeah.
No, see, don't know that, I mean, that's, that's what you're saying.
Well, I know, I'm, I'm just, but looking at the fact that four is already underpopulated, I don't know that you can divide four up into.
Well, I, I figured they would break them all up and then try to do a four quad- quadrant map out of it. So you'd have to break it all up. You, I mean, you'd have to do a complete re-haul of the, all the maps.
But then it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be what Miguel wants, which is two east to west. Because having two east to west, uh, what he's saying is you're not going to have enough populated areas leaving. People that are residing in one of the quadrants won't be enough. So then you're going to have more than ten percent disparity on those, on those districts. So it wouldn't be a matter of east and west, because imagine if you were to draw a quadrant right there, then the area, uh, that is in front of District Six, actually, I think that is where I live, won't have many residents.
Well, I thought you could shift over like pieces, like a little puzzle.
But then it wouldn't be east and westing, though.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's what you'd end up with is, is one or maybe both districts on the west side would have to go across the east side to get population, so it would shift like that, maybe.
So then, but then it wouldn't be east and westing. It would be a matter, it, this should be a matter of population.
It's not about east-west, it's about representation to, for all the city.
You made the comment two in the east and two in the west, that's why I'm saying that.
No, the mayor was talking about all this east stuff and west stuff. So I was saying four quadrants, and you move it to get the population balanced out in every quadrant. So who cares if it crosses over? I don't care about that, I care about four quadrants so that there's three at-large and you don't eliminate one of the districts from the, from the.
So I'm confused now, because a few minutes ago, you were talking about east side, and you were talking about only two people living on the east side.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why I'm trying to understand what you're trying to accomplish here. Help, help me to understand it and I'll do it.
Okay, it's a very simple map. The map is, and this is really for the charter to discuss, uh, review committee. But with the data that this gentleman provides, to come up with four districts that work and balance the population, balance the race, balance it all, um, so that there's four districts in the city. And would this not be concerned about whether there's crossover?
Because right now, a few minutes ago, you were talking about only having two people from the east side representing. So that's why I'm trying, that's why I got confused.
I want to make sure that there's, the whole city is represented, the whole city, the corners, the corners, the corner, the corner, you know.
But the problem is that we are not, we're not like a circle.
Right.
If we were, then we would be able to divide it in a quadrant and have equal representation. This, this map is not working like that.
It's not a perfect square, but.
It's really far from that.
So we're going to have to probably redistrict again in seven years after the next census.
Certainly you will, yes, I, I'm going to predict that right now.
So maybe we don't want to go through the charter process at this point, but look at it in the next, once the next census comes in, because we will know more accurately our growth patterns.
We, we have to have the charter review commission. The charter review commission does not have to decide whether or not to add a single member district. Now, the charter review commission may say they want to talk about that regardless of what we decide. But ultimately, the council decides what goes on the ballot, so.
It, it is ultimately up to us, but I mean, I, I would just say that, you know, District Two, which is the majority east, it, there was, we just had the election and there was one person unopposed who happened to live west. But that's, you're kind of knocking District Two by saying that because they lived on the western side of that district that they, you know what I mean? Like, there's just so many, there's so many ways to approach this, this, this discussion. But what the data is telling us is that District Four, as a single member, has to get larger. So more people still only selecting on one, and District Two has to get smaller. And, and so I think the process that we are about to go through, if we just go through it, is going to reduce the size of District Two and push it further to the east most naturally, where what just occurred won't be able to happen long-term. So I, I'm, I feel like the, 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 the representation argument, we're already in line, but adding more single member districts will, will certainly dilute the amount of people who run, because we, I, we just watched it happen in Buta. Over the last four years, or three years since they've done it, they're, they, they've canceled more elections than they've held. And it changed on that single member district move.
So you, you think we get more applicants for the, fewer applicants for single member district than we do at-large districts? Seems to me it would be the same, I mean, there are people running, people running.
Draws from the entire city, anyone in the city can run, but single members only have a particular area. And so that's just not a seat that's available to two-thirds of the, of the residents, which is fine. But if you go to four, then that's, that's only a fourth of the residents can produce candidates in a competitive race. And it just hasn't always been the case that doing that is, has worked out, where we might find out like, oh, there's just not a lot of interest in a particular district, and that's fine, but it's just the, the nature of it.
I mean, one thing we can do is look at your growth patterns based on data you have and see if there's more population in four than the census shows. Like, I don't know if the growth you've had has been in four, or two, or, or six at this point.
All of those.
Yeah, and that's the thing, is, is, you know, if you're growing sort of uniformly across the board, then it's not really. But at this point, you know, the data that we have shows that the west side has less population than the east side.
Yeah, I, I think that's, I think that's gonna, that trend is going to hold. I think that two, based on the way two is configured with Paramount, it's just recently blown up. Two is definitely the district that's too large. It ha, it's going to have to shrink. So the I thirty-five demarcation would be a great way to start. You know, and again, any way you talk about changing these lines will affect us as individuals. But in terms of just looking at the map, it seems like the path that we're on is to guarantee that District Two comes out of the east, uh, which does accomplish what you're saying.
Well, District Four comes out of the west. I mean, there's different ways of looking at this, right? And it's always, District Four is the only district that always has a seat. But on the east, you could, they could lose seats.
What?
Right, six and two, the, the way that, the way the maps are drawn.
I, I, either, I, I don't necessarily follow what you're saying exactly. But the reality is, we, we have two single member districts that are primarily located on the east. One of them, District Two, had someone who lives west in a smaller portion who ran unopposed. If we eliminated that section, District Two shrinks and is forced to be from the east. And District Four has to contend not only with Plum Creek and Hometown Kyle and Cypress, but also Paramount and south of I thirty-five. So it makes District Four a more interesting race, too. So that's just one way of looking at it, but we need to give them some feedback. If, if we can't just all have our individual opinions on it, we got to make a decision on like, which direction do we want to go? Do we want to pursue the, the philosophical conversation that you're bringing up? And council member, uh, Harris has brought up about, let's add more single member districts and, and let that be the discussion over the next nine months. Or do we want to have, what are the lines of demarcation between Districts Two, Six, and Four to make them balanced? And that's the conversation that we're going to have over the next nine months.
I think, if you don't mind, what you said last is to find out where our numbers are at. Because, uh, the compensation mean, not the compen, but the charter commission's going to be needing to be up and running. And this is just going to be a small sliver of what they've got to go through, including all everything else.
Drawing the lines is not what the charter review commission does.
Okay.
So we have the data, and I've been asking, we've been asking, it seems like the data we have is what we have. So we can, I had to go out for more numbers necessarily. What we're going to do is start having them work on giving us options for how to redraw. And that, that's a decision that we make. Or we could have a committee make the decision on the lines. But the decision about changing our form of government, that is a whole noth, that's all we've been discussing.
Yeah.
Is changing our form of government, not where the lines are. So if we're going to have a change, a discussion about changing our form of government, that's get the charter review commission, have them have that discussion, make a recommendation in the spring slash early summer.
Yeah.
Then we decide, send it to the voters in, uh, in August. They come to the ballot in November and decide whether we're going to add another single member district or many. And then we s, we have to start the process over of figuring out where those lines and borders are.
We go that route, because that way you, first of all, you give the commission the opportunity to go through that. We go on their recommendation and then we bring it to the voters and let them have the say as far as what we want to do. And if it's appro, and if it is approved to where they say, yes, I'd like to have more representation here, or we, we prefer to keep it the way it is, we'll have our answer. And then from there, if it is get approved to where they want to add an additional seat, then we can go to the actual drawing board as far as dividing up the districts and so forth. By then, it'll be two years from now, we'll see where the population growth is. We'll see if District Four has increased or decreased. And we can still have more numbers to show for them. And, because again, from now into twenty twenty-six, everything can change as far as where our housing, our development and so forth. It could expand even more. So by then, we could say if the residents did say they want to have another seat to represent the east side, or maybe the west side, depending what it is with the numbers they give us, we can then draw the boundary lines and go from there and seeing where it's at.
That was, that sounded like a recommendation.
And we take it step by step, but again, we let the residents be able to be involved with that. And then that way, there's no conflicting, because again, seats could change next year as well. You know, there's elections next year. So what we're talking about now, we could have another council, or we could still have the same. So it's, you, we've got to kind of just go with taking it step by step, my, my suggestion on that.
Honestly, uh.
Can I ask a question? How would that, so let's say that we go, the, the comp, or the charter review committee decides to put on next November's ballot, the option to go to a four-two-one, for a single member, two at-large.
Right.
How does that affect the current makeup of the council members?
It would not immediately, um, you'd have to adopt the new system. Um, depending on how you adopt it, you know, someone who's currently at-large may end up in the fourth district. Um, so that wouldn't affect anything, you know, so many hypotheticals once you get out there. I'll just say the plan drawing is, there's almost an infinite number of possibilities. Um, the software we use, we go in at the block level and we can move any line you want. It automatically recalibrates all the data. Um, and, you know, but we, I went through this in the city of Corpus Christi, that Ms. Reed remembers. Um, last time where, you know, you can end up with fifty different types of plans that all meet the standards. Uh, they're more or less acceptable to the political class, is the way I characterize it.
They're more or less acceptable to the political class, is the way I characterize it.
So I don't want to speak for, for Kabi. What I would say is if we wanted to go through the Charter Commission in that way, what would likely happen is they would make a recommendation as to which at-large seat would switch to become a single-member seat, whether that's one, three, or five. One and three will both be up for election on that same ballot. So if it's one of those two, that person would serve their term. And then when their term ended, that would become an at-large seat. So that's, sorry, a single, yeah, sorry, a single-member seat. And so at that point, that person who may not live in that district may then have to run for a different district if he or she wants to stay on.
Or move.
Or move, right.
Just happened.
I know this isn't gonna be the popular conversation right here, but, look, one of the things that really sticks out to me, something you pointed out, is, uh, for the first time, this PAC committee has a, a lot of the vote, it's two to one right now in, in the districts. Fifty-four, fifty-four point six percent, fifty-two point nine percent. And that's something that is recent. It's not something that's been happening for a long time because I remember when these districts were, uh, the other way. And that's something that...
I can see that.
I, I, I worry about losing the representation for this PAC community. The other thing is I like being able to vote for, uh, more than just one council member. If we were to go to symbol, uh, single district or even went to the four-two-one, it limits the people I'm allowed to vote for. So do I have less ears on council because they don't live in my district? Some of the questions we have to ask ourselves. But honestly, uh, I think it, it would be great to put it, like Councilor Tobias said, to a committee. And let's see what the, uh, what they discern or what they decide to bring back towards council and, and then maybe let the voters. But no, I, uh, that's the only concern I have right now is the, uh, right now we have the fifty-four point six, the fifty-two point nine, and thirty-seven point six. And that's something that didn't happen in the past. So breaking it up could eliminate that.
I don't want to speak for Mr. Caputo or for Bickerstaff, but my suggestion, if we're going to take it to the committee, might be to extend their contract and change the scope and have perhaps Bickerstaff provide models of maps of what it would look like as a four district, so that we could provide that to the committee.
That would be...
The, the, so the thing about the Charter Review Committee is that four-two-one, this, the committee does not exist. So when we're talking four-two-one, we're telling a committee that we appoint individually what we want, and then they're gonna make a recommendation back to us. So their recommendation back to us, if we're signaling what we want them to do, is not, that's just a game. It's gonna come back, we have to make the decision.
I don't think we're signaling. What we're saying, let's see what, if the committee's gonna do something with districting, let them do what they're, they're gonna recommend to us, right? But we're not gonna give direction, we're not telling them to go to a, a four-two-one. It, it's just about, let's see if there's a need for it. And the committee will figure that out and then come back to us. Uh, you know, I...
I do, I do much prefer a broader, uh, set of instructions than just, we want to go four-two-one. Because if that's the case, I'm gonna, because I'm already clear where I'm at on this particular topic. So I don't need to go through that process.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not advocating for four-two-one. Actually, I like the process right now because of the numbers that I'm looking at here right now, the fifty-four point six, the fifty-two point nine-three. Are we gonna lose that? And that's my concern right there because growing up, we didn't have those numbers. It was in reverse.
Now, is there any way that maybe we can ask them to show us what the lines would look like in order to make it even right now? And then, um, once they, once we pick, once council picks the Charter Review Committee, bring for them, to them the fact that, you know, if there is a thought on their part to changing how, you know, the council districts are, if they want two, or four, or six, or whatever, is that what they want? Bring that recommendation. What I don't want to hear later on is that they bring a recommendation and then, here on the dice, you guys say, well, Plum Creek, they are the ones that have the biggest votes. So if Plum Creek votes yes or no for whatever the recommendation is, then you guys are gonna say, no, we don't like that. We're gonna do whatever we want. So just, just something to think about because it's, it's something I have heard since I've been here on the dice.
I'd be willing to bet, I've, I've worked with Kabi in the past, he's mentioned that. I'd be willing to bet that he and his people can draw you that map with six districts, they can draw you that map with four districts, whatever you and the compensa, and the, sorry, the, you got me doing it now, too. The Charter Review Commission, what to look at.
Did I say compensation?
We just, we just might have to then bring back an amendment to his contract to do that. But if that's what we want to do, we can, I'm sure we can do that.
Within our current scope, we can do an illustrative plan, just changing the boundaries here to keep the three equal, so you can see what that looks like.
Yes.
That's what I want to do.
That's what, that, that makes sense.
And so we can do that fairly easily. It, you'll probably hate it because, again, I don't know what's going on around here. I will just look at numbers and lines and bring you, you know, what balance is, and then you all can say, well, that's crazy. But yeah, if, if you wanted to, we can draw you a four-three, a five-two, a six-one, you know.
The, the, the original framers of this, they did put the east-west the way that they did specifically because they did not want to inflame council into having members who were doing the east-west discussion. That each, uh, single district, with the exception of four, the two and six would have some representation on both sides. And I think that's, that's served us well. But also, I think that because of the population growth towards the east, that's probably both six and two may get pushed further east.
Yeah, I mean, I understand the concerns and also your concerns, Daniela, but it would be interesting to see the, what is possible. You know, we don't have to be afraid of this change. We don't have to go with it. We just want to see what would this committee, what would it look like? You know, that's all, I, I'm just curious to observe what this would look like. And maybe this is something a committee would want to explore and, you know, let the residents, you know, do they feel like they're getting their representatives, you know, held accountable for their districts? And are at-large members getting away with too much? You know, we don't know. So let's just see. And if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But I think that we've got data, we've got growth, and we're getting prepared for the future by looking at whether it's possible. So I'd like to see both things.
I think what we need, kind of need a decision on now is whether we want to send Kabi to go put together an illustrative plan with the three districts that currently exist, or if we want to go ahead and amend that scope and say, we're gonna go through the Charter Review Commission process and have him design illustrative plans for that. So that's kind of where we are.
I think we all want to see what the lines would look like if we were to balance the districts. I don't know. I don't know if I'm speaking for everybody else, but I think that would be nice to do.
For the three?
Yeah, no, I mean, to make the districts to have equal...
To balance out the current.
To balance it out, yeah, the current districts to have, to be within the 10%.
We also have the capability to, uh, if you guys wanted to do it in a work session, you could tell us what lines to move. And that way, you can have a little more, it, it's a little less iterative than, I'd make a plan, you guys say, this is not right. I go make another plan, you say, you know.
Well, I, I, I will, I'm gonna, I'm gonna shark. Councilmember Floris Cale, former Councilmember Floris Cale, I agree with her comments earlier about the moving of the lines on the map is much better handled away from the dice and allowing for a committee to be the one to workshop and put those lines together as opposed to us because we're full of, you know, election trauma and the battle that we went through to get here. And there's a, a tendency to want to defend territories. And really, this shouldn't be about us. It should be about a cool, calm, and collected group trying to make decisions for the city without necessarily thinking about our fate.
Yeah, we've certainly done it both ways, where the, the body makes the, you know, plays around with the maps or a committee does it. It's easy enough to do it either way.
I'll just throw this out there, Mary. I know this would be like throwing a long pass. Would we consider maybe doing a redistricting committee that looks at all the homework that we're doing, just focus on this? Appointing an ATCOT committee that would just focus only on this versus, and then, they then make the recommendation to the Charter Committee? And they can work out on that end? And then once it goes and they say, this is what we're going to bring to council to vote, to put on the ballot? You actually have three sets of eyes versus two. That way, their whole focus could just be on the population, the voter turnout, the districting, the equal representation, uh, conversation, uh, the growth pattern. And they could really just focus on that, a public committee that focuses on that. When they, when it is time for the compensation meeting, again, when it is time for the Charter Commission to be appointed, they would have all that homework done already. They can then have that conversation and present it and, and say, hey, we've done the majority of the homework on this. Because they're gonna have to dissect everything in the charter, from our penal codes all the way down to our ordinances and so forth. They're gonna have a huge task, especially having to go through each line item for changing out words.
I, I would say yes if we do it right away.
If we do it right away, to where we could set up an ATCOT committee to where we could appoint seven members. And because this is very important, okay, this is the future of the city, voters and everything else, representation. If we appoint a committee that could focus on this, and by that time, where we have the Charter Committee, they can then present it to them and give that recommendation. They can tweak a little bit and then give us the final verdict for us to say, this is what we, yes, no, or break, and we put it on the ballot. Once we put it on the ballot, if the residents then approve it, we already know the direction we're going in. They said, hey, this is what the residents like. Now we can go in as council, because again, we could have the same members, we'll have new members. We can then start dissecting where the numbers are according to the original, um, district committee and the Charter Committee, and everything that, that goes in line with that. It's an, it's an additional step, it's an additional committee. But, uh, it gives it more, the residents more of a voice because of the way our population's growing, the way, uh, our developments are grow, growing as well, the representation of the families that are coming in. It's just giving it that extra leverage versus putting it all on them to be able to decide with the additional homework they're gonna have.
Well, I, I, what I know to be true, because I've seen this happen and play out many times, we are going to vote how we want to vote when this comes forward, regardless. So the committee we create and then the recommendation they make to the other committee, and it does not matter. If they come back and re, uh, recommend six single-member districts to go to the ballot because we want to say that the people get to decide, I'm gonna vote against that. But if it, you know, and everybody's got their own opinion, we're gonna vote the way we want to vote. Really what we want out of these committees is for them to do homework that we can't do on our own, so that they give us more, more value. But really, there's, the conversation we're having right now is about, our districts are out of balance. So we need to, we need to put them into, into balance, which we can, we can start that process. Or the whole other political conversation of, we really want to add, we want to take away the power of the at-large. We want to put more single-member districts because people have valid reasons for that. Because we, we're wanting to make a certain vote in August. And so I just want us to be honest about what we're doing here upfront.
Yes, because this hasn't been done in how long, how many years?
A long time.
Exactly. So taking that extra step of having a committee that really just focuses on the districts itself because of the population, I think the last time this was done, when we had, what, 30,000 people or, or 2010?
2015. The, the committee, and I'll tell you, the committee, I was here that day in 2015 when the Charter Review Commission made a recommendation about going to the, uh, November elections versus May. And they, uh, said they wanted to do May, and the entire council said, too bad, we're doing November. I watched it happen. I was sitting right there when it happened. And so they used the May versus November thing. They were trying to use the commission to get the commission to make a recommendation back that they wanted. The commission made a different recommendation, but lo and behold, they were gonna do what they were gonna do because they're the representatives. It's not, it's not immoral of them to say, no, this is what we're doing because they have to, they're the ones that are trying to lead. And I'm just saying, in my, in my view, this is likely what we're gonna end up facing.
Of course, we're gonna have the final say-so.
Mayor?
That is it. We're gonna have the final say-so. But it's just taking an extra step of having residential input.
Brian?
Yes, sir.
Do you need a motion? What do you need?
Um, I, I need direction of, are you wanting us to proceed with the three districts and to rebalance those using Bickerstaff to do that work? Or do you want us to do some alternative work to look at a, a different alignment of districts and bring that back to you?
Well, can both of those be a short-term and a long-term? Because he says that that's gonna be an easy thing for him to do under the current contract. So I could make a motion to direct him under the current, or direct whatever, uh, under the current contract to redraw the three single-member districts.
And to consider other information as well?
Yeah, while also amending the contract to...
Yeah, we would bring back an amended contract. So what we would do is, we would have you go ahead and give a motion directing staff to get the illustrative, um, plan of the three current districts and to consider coming back with an amendment to the contract to do additional potential changes under the charter.
If, if the review committee comes back, what changes?
I think one of the things we still need to consider is that we will be back here when we have accurate, more accurate information about the growth of the city when we get the next census. So sticking with what we've got now is probably not my preference for a long time because I, I kind of like single-member districts. But, um, I also am disappointed that we can't use our most current population figures, which is really what we need to be, make intelligent redistricting.
I mean, we can talk with your, your Development Services staff here, GIS staff, about what their data is based on and what it looks like. And we can, you know, render an opinion on whether it's something we should be using or could use. But, um, you know, like I said, the key is it has to be as reliable as the census. And the main thing is, it's gotta be block-level data and it's gotta have the race and ethnicity components.
That'll be really difficult.
So, but before you make your motion, it's still, there are just undecided questions like what Councilwoman Tobias just said. So if we're gonna recommend that they go forward and make their, uh, draw their different variations of this current map, who are they gonna present that to? Us, or are we gonna create an, a committee in order for them to specifically look at this?
But then, can, can they bring the long-term plan to the Charter Review Committee? Or if we were to do a dis, redistricting committee, for them to present to council a proposal if they were to want to add single-member districts or have at-large? I think that would be the long-term plan.
The current scope provides that he'll present the illustrative plan to the council. And then at that point, the council decides what community input they want. If we want, uh, when I, when I did this before, we did town halls in all the districts. You want to do town halls, if you want to do a committee, whatever you guys want to do, you can do at that point. But the first step is to get an illustrative plan presented so that you can see what that looks like, and then we can decide how to move forward.
I think that would be a good way to start.
I think we can make that decision on a committee once that comes back to us.
Yes.
So Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Bickerstaff to create an illustrative plan to redraw the current three single-member districts to make them equal. And to, for staff to come back with an amendment to the...
Current contract.
To the current contract, um, for...
For potential future services related to the Charter.
Potential future services under the charter.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilman Heiser, seconded by Councilmember Parsley, that we direct, um, Bickerstaff to move forward with the illustrative plans. There's a discussion on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is agenda number six.
Thanks, Council.
Receive a report, hold discussion regarding the Juvenile Behavioral Health Program with Hill Country Mental Health and Development Disability Centers.
Good evening, Rosie Trulove, Director of Administrative Services. We have with us tonight an update, as we indicated we would do, from Hill Country Mental Health and Developmental Disability Centers on the juvenile health, mental health program that we are establishing. As you'll recall, on May 18th, council recommended award of the contract to Hill Country. We executed that agreement on August 19th, and we're excited to welcome Lisa Sisneros here. She's the Director of Clinical Services to provide an overview of the program that we are implementing.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Sisneros. I have with me a whole team of people. I have Maritza Gonzalez from Hays C I S D, Dr. Watson from Hays C I S D, and Matthew from the Hayes County Health Department, Michelle, who is a clinic director of our Mental Health and Developmental Disabilities Center here in, in Kyle. The project that we, um, have in, have initiated is the collaborative juvenile behavioral health program for the youth and families of the city of Kyle. Um, and what this program will do is place a school-based clinician in the Hays C I S D school district to serve the youth who reside in the city of Kyle. School District to serve the youth who reside in the city of Kyle. January 8th, we, this kind of history, 20, January 8th, we released the access for services, Hill Country submitted a proposal, we were awarded the solicitation, presented two options to city council. To, to date, we have executed a contract with the, the city of Kyle. We've also established a memorandum of understanding and a business-associated agreement with Hays C I S D. And then we have also attempted to reach out to the idea charter schools to include them in the project as well. We have a job description ready to be posted for a school-based clinician. Partners in the project are the city of Kyle, Hill Country MHDD Centers, Hays C I S D, and the Hayes County Health Department. Program highlights, initially a full-time licensed clinician with experience in providing behavioral health, which is substance use and mental health services, will be available to students who attend schools located in Kyle, Texas. These school-based services in partnership with the school faculty and staff allow for identification of juveniles who, who are or who have used substances, and provide accessibility to support services to curb use, improve wellness, and teach alternative methods for coping with the many challenges that our youth are facing. Additional prevention programs will be developed and implemented and coordinated with the Hayes County Health Department. Efforts to increase and expand these services throughout other Hayes County schools and communities is already underway. Information, referral, and access to other community resources and services will be available as well. The goal is to serve 100 unduplicated students, that will be measured by count. The primary focus is individualized accessible prevention, intervention, and treatment of fentanyl and other opiate use, however alcohol, tobacco, and other substance education and support services will also be available. The school-based clinician will have an office at one of the Hays C I S D campuses here in Kyle. Are we still thinking Kyle Elementary will be the... So the, the clinician will be based out of that office, but will travel to the different campuses to see the students. And to mitigate any educational disruptions, we'll make all effort to prevent students from being removed from core classes for those services. They will meet with staff from participating schools weekly to ensure appropriate coordination and a holistic approach. The program is funded by the city of Kyle, the program actually meaning our salary for that full-time clinician. So services will be made available to school campuses located within the Kyle city limits. We'll focus on tier-three services to students who are already experiencing concerns related to substance use, so partnerships with existing programs in our communities, communities and schools, Synacor, other projects will be coordinated for those, Hayes County Health Department, for those prevention efforts in the long range. So multiple referral pathways, so school staff in those schools in the city limits of Kyle will refer staff when there's an identified concern. Families can self-refer directly, and students can also refer for support and services. Referrals are made through a secure Microsoft Forms page that's made available through a QR code that will be available on clinician's business cards, flyers posted around the Kyle community, and then other documents that the school district will be made available so they can access that service. Compliance with HIPAA and other privacy regulations are allowable per the Hays C I S D and Hill Country BAA, so information sharing pertaining to those students and keeping them out of crisis is a primary focus. The service workflow are, the full-time clinician will receive the referral, they'll contact the referring individual for additional information. So if it comes from a school counselor or a teacher, they'll have information as to who made that referral, reach out to them, gather additional information about the referral, clinician will contact the legal parent or guardian for notification of the referral and to request consent to meet with the student for screening of needs. Or if the student is over age, the age of 16, the student may contact, we can contact them directly, but we will make all efforts to acquire legal parent guardian consent prior to screening any of the youth in our schools. Student assessment of needs and strengths will be conducted, individualized treatment plan that includes a discharge timeline is completed and services are initiated. So that student, based on their needs, will be, those needs will be identified, and their treatment planning is definitely individualized. We cannot require them to receive services from us. So they will have other options, and we'll make sure they are aware of those other options. We are not billing insurance or charging for the service since the salary of that staff person is already funded through the, the project with you all. So thank you for that. So any updates, reviews will be made midway through, discharge planning on what that's gonna look like, and after care, follow-up continued support and services. And then no less than 60 days and no more than 90 days after they finish the program and the treatment, then they'll discharge, they'll have a follow-up appointment. Services are individualized based on the needs and strength of each student and their family. So services may include substance use and mental health screening, assessment, individualized treatment planning, one-on-one counseling, support for the students, youth family counseling and support, youth group counseling, youth group education, so education as far as opioid reversal, any kind of harm reduction, support that they may need, making sure that they understand about sexually transmitted diseases, how to avoid any kind of sharing of substances, taking items from, you know, other students that they may not know what those are, so just general safety and group education. And then definitely support for any other additional services they may need, and then access with those through the, through the community. Regardless of ability to pay, they're not required to receive the services through this program, we can definitely help them identify other supports and resources that they may need. Next steps, we'll get that position posted. We're coordinating an interview selection team that does include representation from Hays C I S D and the city of Kyle. Who, someone, who was gonna, someone from the city of Kyle is also serving on that interview committee. So we have a team that will be interviewing that clinician. So qualified applications are gonna be reviewed by the selection team. Hill Country will schedule interviews with the selected candidates, interview with our team, and then make recommendations through the HR department with Hill Country. We, once we make an offer to a candidate, they all undergo background checks, fingerprinting, drug testing, and then we'll begin training, and they have training summer, there are requirements for the school district that they will also have to complete, and then services will begin. Additionally, we really want to utilize interns to supplement the number of providers that we have. There is a shortage of licensed providers throughout the nation, not just in Texas, but we could have some interns working in the program, working with the school district as well. We're looking for grants and other sources of funding to expand the program within the Hays C I S D and throughout Hayes County. We're looking to identify community partners and opportunities to serve youth in Kyle and the broader communities of Hayes County. Continue to identify opportunities to fund prevention and intervention services, not just treatment services. And then conducting marketing and outreach planning with the city of Kyle, the communicate, city of Kyle Communication Department and the Hayes County Health Department. All right, I want to thank you all. I've, I'm a long-term resident of Kyle, I've lived in Kyle since the early 80s. I've had four, two rounds of kids, four kids graduate from the Hays C I S D School District, did all of my graduate studies and my licensing, supporting families in Hayes County. I've been working in the public service field for 23 years, 10 of which with Community Action and 10 here with Hill Country. So I, I am thankful, this is a long time overdue. I had a child who struggled in school with substance use and mental health, and there was not anything in this community that was really helpful. And it was a real, a real struggle. And so to see this actually hap, happening and coming to fruition for me is really, I'm, I just, I'm so excited about it. So I, I thank you all for this project and this opportunity.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant, I mean, the presenter, our comments? Councilmember Parsley?
Okay. So I, I had questions about the location, and you say that you will be in Kyle Elementary?
So there's a space, do you want to talk about that, Dr. Watson?
Hi, good evening, I'm Michael Watson with Hays C I S D. First of all, I just want to say thank you. This is very bold, you guys are being proactive, a lot of times we're being reactive, and I think this is an amazing program that we're putting in place. So currently, the ask was for some office space for the clinician to work out of and do their reports, and we have an exterior building at Kyle Elementary. They won't be housed in the actual school, but we have a building that is on the site that is on, near the campus.
Okay, so the second question is like you mentioned about a QR code, and that's the way kind of my, my, my school does it with the counselor, the kids will scan the QR code to get time to speak to the counselor. How, how are we, again, I don't want this to sound harsh, but how do we, are we gonna just deny somebody who doesn't live in Kyle?
So, you know, we're, we're already underway trying to expand outside of the city of Kyle. I'm also involved with a project with Texas State University for the San Marcos, I'm sorry, not San Marcos C I S D, for Whibley and Dripping Springs School Districts, to have a halftime clinician there providing the same type of support. So we definitely are thinking how that person could maybe serve the other halftime for the remainder of the Hays School District, and how we could fund that other halftime position. This project was originally a two full-time and one half, one administrative support position to cover the whole district. So the fact that we're even able to just get Kyle schools is just incredible that that salary is funded. There's not a lot of, there's a lot of grants that are coming out for substance use services, but mostly around the opioid epidemic, which we definitely know in Kyle, we needed, we need to address that. But the actual grants right now to get a staff member salaried, very limited. There are mostly contracts, we have contracts with the state for fee-for-service reimbursement. We roll it in with mental health for co-occurring mental health and substance use disorders and fund some of their salaries through that. And then we also work with Bewell Texas for medication-assisted treatment in Hayes County to fund a salary for those adults over 18. So funding for a salary to just say, go do your job regardless of whether someone has insurance or money to pay for that or not, just let's get these, these services out there, let's talk about the opioid use, let's talk about how to prevent overdose, let's, let's get those, those voices heard and those treatment services out there. This is, this is great, this is fantastic. But yeah, it would be great to be able to have additional staff, and we're working on that as soon as possible. The charter schools were definitely, we've reached out to them because we do want to be able to support and provide those. We've been talking, we've been talking for a while with Dr. Watson and Maritza about the, the impact school, the, the other school settings that we can provide those services in. So we, we're, we're open to, we're talking about how do we, how do we serve with just not being so limiting, but we do want to respect that the funds were particularly for city of Kyle residents, and so...
That's exactly where my point is, like, I know, I know I have a list of residents that are really against this because they think that, no, this is a job for the school, or this is a job for the county. And so in respect to their taxes that are paying for this service, I want to make sure that, you know, the funds are allocated to, to residents of Kyle, I don't want to, not discriminating against the rest of his county. But what I would hate is for one kid that does not live in Kyle and goes and scanned the QR code, is like, oh, sorry, you're gonna have to find somebody else. So I don't, I don't know how you guys will be preventing that.
So I would say definitely, we have options for other service delivery outside of the school-based setting. Michelle here is our clinic director.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna step in and answer a little bit, that Hill Country is the local mental health authority, will never deny services to someone who shows a clinical need for that. So if they live in Buta and, you know, they want this particular program, we, I mean, if there's room and space for it, for this clinician to take on that person, then they may end up serving that person. But really, we have a network of clinicians across the 19-county area, so we're never gonna deny services to someone who needs it, it might not be in this setting or with this position, but we will serve that person if there's a need, so just wanted to throw that in.
And so the next question, and thank you for answering, how are we doing the follow-ups? Like, is this going to be, like, if somebody needs help, is there a specific number of follow-ups you will do, or this is gonna be a treatment during, until they...
Yeah, good question. It's gonna be really individualized to the need, and definitely since we're working with the school, the counselors at the school, we're working with the communities and schools, there are other programs that we're definitely going to make sure that that, that each student has those needs being met. And it's just, it's gonna vary. I mean, we know treatment protocols, we know what kinds of, of education and information and support, but there's not gonna be, we're not gonna say you only get three visits. It's gonna really depend, that's why we do the check-ins on the treatment plan and the discharge plan. We're always looking at that end goal of, okay, where are we going, what are we working for, where we, what is our end goal? For some, it's abstinence, you know, not using at all, and for some, it's being safe. And it's gonna be what that need is.
And so what would be the budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026? Because we, I know we just approved the 100,000, if I remember correctly, but that was just until, like, two weeks?
We approved the first year of the contract, which is the, the cost for the staff member for a full fiscal year, or a full, a full 12-month period. We anticipate that there might be slight expenses with cost of living that might increase that, we don't have, I think, I'd have to pull back the information to see what we estimated. We also know that we won't have the initial startup costs that are, were built into that, that initial contract amount, but it's going to be roughly around that same amount. And what we have is a contract that's been approved for, for one year and with options to renew as we move forward. So it's not, it's not, we haven't been locked into a three-year contract or anything along those lines.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Mayor Proton?
Yeah, I just want to say, Rosie, thank you for bringing everybody together, school district, the health department, everyone. When this first came to council, I was a little apprehensive about it because I just didn't feel like we had reached out to everybody, but it looks like we have collective team now. And really excited that we are moving forward with this, and with all the partnerships, that's really, really important when you're bringing something like this together. The other thing is our kids, I mean, it's investment in our kids. Just this past week, we had a report of something at Hayes High School, and maybe that could have been prevented, who knows? But when you invest in your children, I mean, it's important. And maybe this is the president's for the next city next to us, San Marcos, Buta, if you're watching, invest in your kids, mental health is important, and, and everything else that's going on in our schools is really real. I mean, we just saw it this past week. So anytime we invest in kids, and I'm definitely gonna support it, because it's important. So thank y'all for coming together, thank y'all for working together, and I hope y'all continue to work together, and hopefully we can expand this throughout the county.
Yes, definitely looking for opportunities for that in the works and the process, so thank you.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
And I, I did want to just say how much I appreciate the partnership that we have developed with Hayes County, with Hill Country, and with the school district. It's been, it's been honestly a lot of fun to get to know the, the entities and to see us all coming together around this, so I want to thank them for, for their participation.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that it is, you know, good to see how this program came together, as Mr. Rizzo said, I did have those early reservations, but if you can identify a kid who, you know, might harm, harm himself or harm others and inter, you know, cause that intervention early, you know, you might, you might be able to help the entire community out, you know, so it's a good program.
Mayor, just lastly, like, council, like, thank you guys for green-lighting this, and we took a couple different votes and had some very spirited dialogue, and, you know, subsidized care for people in our community is not something cities of our size typically do, and I just want to thank you guys for, for making this a reality. All right. Next up is the consent agenda, does anybody have any items they wish to have pulled off and discussed?
I thought we were bringing the others up.
So that, the next one comes after, it's pushing them up to their items, so I was, I said it'd be after the consent. If we want to, are there particular items we want to pull out and discuss? I just...
I just have one small question on seven.
Okay, you want to just go ahead and ask it now?
Sure.
All right.
Alrighty. This is the Viking construction. It just basically has to do with the notifications of the residents in the area. So I, one of the roads that I see that we're doing, Leon, is going to be, it's a microsurfing where we could work on the roadways. Number three, Philonima, I certified a parkway. Number one, do we have a time estimated date where we'll do that? Because we have two major schools in that area. We've got Idea, and that's, and also we got Fuentes. So, and I know that they'll probably cut off half the street to be able to do it and block it off. Just want to make sure that we advise or give the perfect detours because, and there's a lot of people that park to pick up their kids. And so, and then also with the buses that leave out, just kind of giving an idea. If, if it could be done during the holiday break, or the weekend, or whatever, that would be a suggestion. But I just wanted to, to see where you stand, or where, where the, the direction would be on that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Barbara, City Engineer. Councilmember Tobias, the plan is to encumber this money for next year's resurfacing. We probably won't be doing any resurfacing this later, later during this year because of the weather. So it'll probably happen sometime around the spring or summer of next year. And if council recalls, we have another million dollars that we're going to encumber for additional microsurfacing. So we're gonna have a pretty hefty amount of, of resurfacing we're going to be doing next year. So we're gonna really have to focus on letting our people know what's coming, and our citizens know what's coming, so we can make sure we have plans to make sure that the schools are involved and know what's going on. So it's a pretty major program for next year.
Okay, great. Yeah, because I mean, that'd be an ideal thing to, to consider, especially around the schools. If, versus, you know, doing it during spring or during spring break, or doing it at the beginning of summer where you have none of that school traffic, it could just be a consideration on, on those end. But I am glad that we're getting a lot of those done, especially East Kyle. You got Everwood done, and some of the other ones, BB Road got redone again, so thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Councilmember, I just wanted to add a couple of things. If you'll notice, most of those roads are the first bond program that we had. I've noticed a little bit of stressing some of those roads, so this is a perfect time for us to be hitting those roads. You can see some cracking on, on some of the roads already, so. But I do like to do this work during the summer, and preferably when school's out, because that's when we get a better surface, and it sets up faster also.
Yes, it sure does. Well, thank you very much. That's all I had, sir. Councilmember Zuniga.
Yeah, I'd like to pull number nine, and then I have a general question about eight and 11.
All right. You want to go with the eight and 11?
11, Leon, I'll need you back.
And, and eight, you can just ask them both this because they're both either order.
11, I don't think we need to go back through the presentation, but I said it last week, and I'm gonna say it again. I really don't think personally that we need to develop around the creek basins. So I think that it's worth for council to reconsider the damage to the environment, the cost of pollution in our creek basin, which adds a cost to our treatment plants and wastewater plants, our wastewater systems. And is a price to develop incrementally around these creek basins worth the loss of nature, of things that we cannot make?
Well, so that's a.
So this is, to me, an environmental concern.
So it's, it's a political comment. They gave their explanation at the last meeting.
The explanation is understood.
It's a, it's a baseline from the center point of the, of the creek irrespective of geography and topography. So if you're, if the claim is that that's accurate, then your comments would be well, well, well said. But what they've said is that, that because of the contours and the actual creek flow, that really what, what this particular outlined map does is take areas that are not in the floodplain and puts them in their right spot.
Right. But I think that we have a variance way of doing this, and a case-by-case, if, if needed, that we don't have to, we don't have to vote on, we don't have to change, well, our codes or whatever. We can leave it as it is and let people ask for variances, case by case.
Okay, number eight?
Said, do we need a vote on 11?
No, you just said you had a comment to make.
No, I said I was gonna pull.
That was number nine.
You said to pull nine.
That was number nine. I believe he was commenting.
That was number nine?
Yes, sir.
That you just had, okay, well, I didn't read number nine. I'm sorry. I thought you did eight and 11. That's my fault.
Number nine I pulled, so do we need a?
I think you would consider.
Yeah, you pulled nine, so we'll pin that for in a second. Let's do eight and 11 for now. You said you had a couple comments you wanted to make.
So back to eight, the community gardens. Now, I think it's a great program, but I did not see during, in the slides, Mr. Lopez, what would be the, the enforcement if people vandalized or damaged other people's, you know, plots? And the, and the, would they re-afine, or would there be, like, no longer would they be allowed to participate in the community garden program?
So councilmember, that would be on a case-by-case basis, depending on the severity of the issue at hand. In some cases, I mean, it might, you know, range from a conversation or a minor of rules. Also, there's gonna be an orientation involved for every, everyone who gets a plot. So we become really familiar, and we hope we minimize the impact of that. But occasionally, we might have to issue some reminder, some form of restitution, maybe in some cases if there's an act of vandalism. It'll just vary.
Right, because, because people will invest a lot of their time and resources to plant their crops. And I think you had, there was in there, like, you're not allowed to take from other people's areas. So if someone were doing that, or vandalizing, or, or, you know, what they've.
It does say that.
You lose your privilege, right?
You can lose your privilege and also not be reimbursed for the money that you've already provided.
Okay. So yeah, because I want to see the program working well, and hopefully discourage people from, you know, making it a bad experience for others.
And we think orientation will go a long way with that.
Unfortunately, that's not a big problem in most community gardens, that there's really a cooperative effort. And I, I wanted to commend you on the rules that you submitted to us. The committee really worked really hard on those rules and got rules from a number of other community gardens in our area. And they did a really thoughtful amount of work, so thank you very much.
Thank you. So a related concern about number 11?
Ask, ask number nine?
Yeah, ask number, which one, ask number eight. So again, about the enforcement for the contingency plan?
When the drought contingency plan is adopted, that will go into the code, and there will be criminal penalties.
Well, yeah, I wanted to know more about what is the contingency plan? Like, what, it didn't look like we're gonna slow down any. So for example, if every, if we are running out of water, what, what really is the contingency? Are we gonna slow down development as well? Because I don't think it spoke to that in the, in the slides.
So Mike Murphy, Director of Water Utilities. So what we're working on is our Water Master Plan, okay? So this is an actual additional task order to the, to the Water Master Plan. So we're gonna develop a contingency plan that also, or a conservation plan, I'm sorry, that's gonna include the drought contingency plan. And it's gonna have the trigger, trigger mechanisms in that plan that are specifically designed for the City of Kyle. Right now, we're, we're using the drought contingency plans for all of our providers of water. And so what we're trying to do is we're gonna create a matrix that is, that is specific to us. That's what we're gonna do. Now, as far as the enforcement part of it, that's gonna be part of the plan. And STV has got a vast amount of experience in doing these type of, type of plans. And we met with them as recently as last week on ideas that we're gonna start implementing once this is approved.
Okay, that, that's what I was looking for, that there was gonna be that, that component if, if they were not following the rules, that we, we could have some enforcement in the contingency plans. That's it.
All right, does anybody have any other items they wish to discuss or pull off the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items seven through 18, excluding nine.
Second.
Our motion by Mayor Protem, second by Councilmember Tobias, that we approve the consent agenda, seven through 18, except for nine. Is there discussion on the motion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Our motion carries seven to zero. Our next up is agenda item number nine, consider approval, second reading, consider approval of an ordinance submitting, Chapter 17, Section 1724, methods of reducing flood losses and nuisance conditions of the City of Kyle Code of Ordinance related to the stream buffer requirements. So it was a six vote at the last meeting, which I understand. I will say that historically, whenever there's six, one votes on first reading, I try to pull them for second reading. I just missed that one, so I, I understand what you're doing there. But I'd like to make a motion to approve number nine.
Second.
All right, motion by Mayor, second by Mayor Protem, that we approve agenda item number nine. Is there discussion on that motion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All right, motion carries six to one. Now we're gonna pull up agenda item number 27. Receive a report, hold discussion for our staff direction regarding quality-of-life study for people with disabilities in Kyle. Mr. Elizondo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I have a presentation coming back to you all. It's with some research that, that staff did related to a quality-of-life study for people with disabilities, but also asking specifically, I think, we have next steps of what staff's gonna do, but specifically asking at the end for some direction from council, some feedback from council. And we'll get to that at the very end. But the background of this item is that Councilmember Zuniga put this on the agenda in August, and the council voted unanimously to look at a quality-of-life study for people with disabilities. So staff took it and did some research. We've done research not, not only into quality-of-life studies, but also what other cities have done with them and how they've utilized them. So just to start, this study would provide, a quality-of-life study would provide great insights into the specific needs and challenges and opportunities faced by this community. A full quality-of-life study across the entire city looks, we identified, could look at seven different major buckets. The first being accessibility, which speaks to public spa, the accessibility of public spaces, transportation, and online services for people with disabilities. The second major bucket would be health and, and well-being. And this is based off of other quality-of-life studies that we saw in other cities. The health and well-being, which looks at availability, affordability, and inclusivity of healthcare and mental health services for people in the community. Economic opportunities, that's analyzing employment access and, and workplace accommodations. Another major, another major component is social inclusion and community participation. Education lifelong, lifelong learning is another big one. That's looking at access to education and vocational training and inclusive practices for people with disabilities. And then housing and independent living, availability, affordability, and suitability of accessible housing. And then, of course, the last bucket is rights and advocacy, looking at not only the awareness of the rights, but also the enforcement of legal protections and people, organizations that advocate for those rights. So those are seven major buckets that these, that these quality-of-life studies look at. Any of, there's, now, there's two studies that I'm gonna go over in just a second, but any of these studies, I wanted to give a small rundown of just what they would be doing, right? So there would be an initial evaluation of whatever this study is looking at, of all seven of those big buckets. Whatever they're looking at, there'd be an initial evaluation of it, conducting assessments in whatever area they're looking at. Quality improvement, how you're gonna change it, what you're expecting, what you're expecting to happen, and how you're gonna make those changes. And then an extensive data collection and analysis, including citizen and community input from not only the community at large, but specifically community and organizations that are related to people with disabilities. And then a system design, which would come out and say, how are we gonna change it? What are we gonna do? What actions, what actual actions are we gonna take to, to remedy whatever, whatever's found, whatever steps are gonna be taken? And then most, most consultants would give some sort of technical analysis or training of this is the best way to do this, the best way to roll it out. So here, here comes, here comes the portion that we need, staff needs direct feedback from council. We're really looking at two types of quality-of-life studies. The first is a full city scope study, where you look at all seven of those buckets, which is, which is extensive across the entire city. And there are consultants that, that do this. What we saw was this was, this was done mostly in major cities like Austin, Houston, Dallas. This is, this is, it's, this is a great study across the whole city, but it's, it takes quite a bit of time. The action plan that comes out of it to roll it out usually takes years. And there's, the, the, these larger cities usually have divisions or departments that are specific to taking that large action plan and rolling it out across the city over years. And so you see, and it, and it also costs quite a bit more than a, a study with a smaller scope. When you look at mid-sized cities or smaller cities like Arlington, Plano, San Marcos, College Station, these ones have done the same, the same type of study, quality-of-life studies, but they took those seven buckets and they limited the scope to something very specific. So for instance, a quality-of-life study that looks at, for, for people with disabilities that looks at public spaces and public facilities. So specific to the city's facilities and how that, how that relates to the community of people with, with disabilities. Or community programming, so a quality-of-life study with the scope to look at the actual programming we have in the city and how inclusive it is. You could also do it from a geographical area, so you could say a quality-of-life study that looks at our downtown area and how that is best suited for people with disabilities. The, this is going, this is spoiler, but this is going to be staff's recommendation to council, mainly because the, the study that comes out of it is smaller in scope, and it's much more actionable. And we have a very specific scope on what we're doing. We can, we can move on it quicker, and we can, we can roll it out faster to get, to get more faster results. The other part of that is, once we have that quality-of-life study with a smaller scope, we roll it out, we have the action plan, we act on it, we can always come back and pick another quality-of-life study, you know, if it was successful in a different area. So this is staff's recommendation, that kind of the pros and the cons of that larger study is, yes, you do get a full scope and a full program, an action plan for the whole city, but it can take quite a bit of time to roll out, and, you know, you need extensive resources. Usually, there's, there's, you put committees together and roll it out over years. A smaller scope, it's a little, it's cheaper, which really isn't the consideration here based on conversations with council, with council at the last meeting. But it also is a, a smaller scope that we can move on and act on much quicker. So tonight, the next steps would be that staff would go out and get an RFQ with some of these consultants. There are definitely consultants in this area, very good ones, that do these quality-of-life studies. Many come out of the universities around here. There's some, there's some great ones at Texas State, at UT, which are very close to here, but also some third-party consultants that do this work just on their own. We identified many of them and looked into a lot of the services that they do. Staff's recommendation would be that council would discuss a smaller scope of work for the first quality-of-life study, if that's the direction that you all want to go into, what that scope would be. And then staff would take that scope and put it into an RFQ and get some, get some qualifications from some of those consultants and move forward with bringing a contract to council to go look at that specific scope, and then move on with that scope to get an action plan. I'll take any questions this time. I will caveat one thing before we jump into questions. Staff took a look at the, the cursory quality-of-life study and how it would be rolled out. No one here tonight is an expert on what the actual study and quality of life would be. We would need a consultant for that, so if the questions get very detailed into how, how the study is, is rolled out and how, how staff is not prepared to answer that at this time. But I'll take any questions that you have.
All right, does anybody have any questions? Mayor Protem?
Yeah, just want, first of all, you're talking about dollars for the study. Since we didn't budget this last year or this year, what are we looking at dollar-wise for a study like this?
So this is, this is very cursory. This is very ballpark. But a smaller study, we were looking at somewhere between $25,000 to $50,000. And for a full citywide study, they can go all the way up to about half a million dollars.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was worried about. I didn't, I didn't want to do the half million because we didn't budget. Twenty-five to 50, it's a little more attainable. But yeah, I'm really looking forward to doing something here, study-wise, to see where we are as a city. And one of the things I, you pointed out to is we are not Austin. We don't have the large budget that they have. You know, when I look at their budget per year and see ours, I mean, it's a lot different. They're able to implement a lot more, you know, when it comes to their programming. But I'd love to see something that's attainable, something that we could actually implement in real time to make a difference in, in the lives of the people who are here trying to help. So I definitely think a smaller scope and making sure that we do our best on stuff that we could actually really implement would be important.
Councilmember Tobias?
Yes, when you look at the specific scope of what we're trying to accomplish, I think we can also utilize that when we're developing our parks comprehension plan because public spaces, you know, you've got your playground with your sensory playgrounds that we have. I think we also do already a good job with our community programming. I give it up to the ladies in the back when they have the disability dances for, for Valentine's Day and for Christmas. Those things are. Those things are packed. If y'all have never been there, y'all should go. I'm serious. They, they are fun, and you see so many of your community members out there. Employment, employment opportunities. I think it's good that we continue to work with the Texas Workforce Commission. My son, everybody knows that he has autism, but he was able to work for the City of Kyle this, this year through them and providing those opportunities. So we're, we're striving. We're, we're, we're making ground. And of course, now with the mental health initiative that Mr. Hayes brought forward. So I think we're on the right path. I think we're on the right path as far as what we're trying to do for our residents that have disabilities. Let's just continue to do a survey to see what else we can do long-term, whether it's providing more parking spaces for those who are disabled, that have to say disabilities with wheelchairs and walkers. I see that you're also looking at certain areas, like a downtown study, because there are people with wheelchairs that do have a hard time going up and down these sidewalks. So it's evaluating all of that. But then again, let's get some public feedback. This is what I'll see. Reach out to our, our residents. And I know we mentioned these, this term town hall. You know, we could do something like that and get some feedback from our residents on a one-on-one basis, and we can gather some information from them, if they could provide that as well. And we'd love to hear from, from our residents as well, so. But thank you for bringing this forward, and same thing with you, Mr. Zuniga, for bringing this forward as well.
Yeah, I just want to echo, I guess, what council members have said. Sorry to jump in. But I think a smaller scope is probably like where we'd like to be. And I think there, we do cover a lot of aspects already with, so some of the housing and the accessibility, but I like to capture more of the economic opportunities, the education and lifelong learning to help support and, and inform our community about, you know, the, the needs that we have. And so, and we do a good job with the, with the programming, but maybe a little bit more on the health and wellness, where we, we have these recreational opportunities tailored to the people with disabilities. So we, we, we capture a lot of it, but I think a, a little bit more of a focus on some of these that I just touched on.
Okay.
Because the rest of it, you know, it's coming with the, with the housing, but, you know, the economic part and the education is where I was trying to get to, is where a support system, you know, that, for parents to, to network with each other and, and for us to kind of create that platform for them. Thank you. They're all good, they're all very good, you know, all, all seven, but obviously, we can't do them all. We don't have departments.
Additional thoughts? Motions? We need to give direction. You said on the smaller scope.
Yes. I think the direction, correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like the direction is to limit the scope and probably limit it to what the city can control. So maybe, so maybe city facilities, city programming, but, but also the stuff that we do, we are doing, maybe evaluate it, see if there's something that we can do better. But, but from the, from the side of what the city's doing, what we can control, and then maybe into some of those areas like lifelong learning and education that maybe we aren't looking into, but.
Right.
And, and maybe just that first evaluation with the consultant would be really eye-opening and helpful to see maybe where we have some gaps. Does that, does that sound?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's helpful.
Do you may make a motion?
Go for it.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, for the staff recommendation for RFQ with defined scope, specific scope to what we were discussed up here at the dice.
Second.
All right, motion by Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Councilmember Zuniga, that we direct staff to proceed forward as discussed. Is there discussion on the matter? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
All right, next up is agenda item twenty-eight. Receive a report, hold a discussion, provide staff direction regarding the creation of a city entity on aging. Ms. Schmeitz.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amber Schmeitz, Assistant City Manager for the Record. So all of you know, we do not have a current city-sponsored organization that is taxed with focus on the aging population. It is commonplace for cities to have such oversight bodies. Buda has a commission on aging. San Marcos has a senior citizen advisory board, and the state of Texas has a special committee on aging with a subcommittee of Aging Texas Well. On August twentieth, the council tasked the staff with conducting a study and making a recommendation regarding an establishment of a committee on aging. We have identified options for forming a city-sponsored organization of residents and an outline of potential key initiatives. Additionally, there's an opportunity to conduct a study on the Kyle's population and needs. So per our city code, we have definitions for the different structures we put on our boards, commissions, committees, et cetera. And I laid those out here. So tonight, you would have options to create a board, a committee. A committee is created by a resolution. It dissolves after one year of creation, upon completion of its purpose, or upon abolishment of the council with or without cause. And then, a task force is created by a resolution, and members are appointed by the council for a specific activity. It can be one, two, or three members of the council, boards and commission members, staff, citizens, and such subject matter experts. The scope is established by the City Council, includes the issued statement, parameters, deliverables, and status reports, and the dissolution date is determined at the final creation date of that task force. Most commonly, you are familiar with is the board. It's created by an ordinance, and members are appointed by the council. The ordinance determines the scope and authority of that board. The reason I am not recommending a commission is because it has purpose and authority defined by the, a local ordinance and state and local law. So that's, you're going to see the Civil Service Commission acting as a commission. So generally, these are the terms of our board or commission. It's one term of two years, maybe reappointed for two or more terms. So you could adopt these terms similar to our other boards if you would wish to. These are generally our qualifications. They must be at least eighteen years of age, be a citizen of the U.S., be a qualified voter of the city, have been a resident of the state of Texas and the city for at least twelve consecutive months, and not be delinquent on any indebtedness to the city, city taxes. Here are some potential initiatives that you all could task this entity with. These are the Aging Texas Well Advisory Committee initiatives, and they're listed out as caregiving, community support, education, social engagement, et cetera. You could use the, utilize the Aging Texas Well Strategic Plan. AARP has resources, and there are other organizations locally, nationally, that have initiatives for you to consider. And then, this board, you could task them with serving as, being an advisory board to the City Council on aging initiatives. There's also the opportunity for a master planning effort, and this committee or board that you decide to go with tonight could also choose to embark on a planning effort where they would look at the City of Kyle specifically and do a more in-depth community profile of Kyle. So we would look at what Kyle's needs are specifically with regard to the aging population, and you could narrow those initiatives more focused to what Kyle needs. So tonight, I'm asking for direction from the City Council for the following items. Direct staff to proceed with bringing forward the appropriate organizational structure and suggested bylaws, scope, so a committee, a board, or a task force. Determine the terms and qualifications to include age, residency. And then, the other thing that you sometimes select for your other boards and commissions is a specialized skill or background. So like Economic Development Board has a micro-business representative. Arts and Cultural Board has art, artists, artists on their board. So you could also add that in as a qualification for one or all of your members. You can keep and modify the key initiatives that were outlined, or you can improve on those, add them. You could direct staff to issue an RFQ to complete a comprehensive study to obtain an in-depth community profile, to assist in determining the key initiatives that you want the group to focus on, and then any other council direction you want with regard to this entity.
All right. Do you all have thoughts?
I want to say thank you very much for bringing this back to us. I would like to consider that we recommend a commit, a board on aging, so that it be a more permanent board, that it have qualifications related to age, over the age of fifty-five residency in Kyle. I don't think we particularly need specialized skills or background, but as we review the applicants, those might be considered. Seven-member board is standard for us, and that's, I think, what we want to include. I don't think that we need to do an RFQ for a comprehensive study at this time. I think that is something that the committee might want to recommend in the future, after looking at some of the issues that were defined as issues they might want to address.
Fifty-five, is that the number we're all good with?
Hey, I qualify.
You have gray hair.
And I got my hair. And I got my AARP.
I'll motion on it unless we want to keep discussing it. All right, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to proceed forward with the creation of a committee on aging and to direct staff to follow the city's boards and commission policy, establishing the, the committee be seven-member panel and, and meet all other requirements, and have one additional stipulation that the minimum age for the committee be fifty-five.
Second.
All right, motion by the mayor, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem. Is there discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. All right, we're going to do this item number thirty-one, then I want to take a break and tell everyone to go outside, because we are seven minutes, nine minutes away from the last lunar eclipse piece of it. So I've, I've had it on my thing, so just know I'm thinking about that. All right, we'll do agenda item thirty-one. Consider directing the city manager to remove building permit fees associated with the construction of ADA ramps. Councilor Harris.
Yes, we've discussed this in the past, that, that permit fees for ramps aren't particularly excessive as far as city permit fees are considered, but they are excessive when you're talking about ordinarily having to come directly out of the pocket of the person who is affected by needing a ramp. I would like to recommend, I'd like to make motion that we eliminate that from our fee structure, that we no longer have fees associated with building ramps.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Harris, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem, that we eliminate the building permit fees associated with the construction of ADA ramps. Is there discussion on the motion?
Yeah, just real quick, they still have to apply, they still have to get everything approved by the city, so that way, we're not building junk out there.
Yes, sir.
We're building ramps, okay.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. We're going to break until nine fifty. So that's going to be a long one, fifteen minutes, but I want to see this, I want to see the mood. Nineteen. Consider approval of a resolution establishing a property improvement program and authorizing an agreement with Austin Habitat for Humanity for a pilot program to implement the property improvement program. Ms. McCollum.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Melissa McCollum, Chief Development Officer. I'm really excited to bring this item back to you this evening. We actually talked about it in, it's funny, I, I was back there and Rosie was like, make sure you push the button right on the screen, and, okay. Anyways, back in May, we actually talked about some opportunities to improve private properties for maintenance and honestly, compliance, potential compliance. We do had some available funding in this year and next year's fiscal year budget for property improvements, and we're actually hoping to utilize some of those funds and link up with Austin Habitat for Humanity to implement a home repair program. And so Austin Habitat for Humanity currently operates a home repair program. They're not new to this business. They're doing it in the area and the region already. So really, I reached out to them to lean on them and some of their collaborators that they have. They currently operate this program within the City of Austin, as well as several surrounding counties. And actually, when I reached out to them, we realized that they already have forty people that have reached out and submitted applications through their home repair program for improvements already within the City of Kyle. Thank you. So kind of typical types of repairs, I pulled this directly from their website. They are varied and, and can range. Again, they haven't really looked into the eligibility of those who have already applied and are currently on the waiting list, but this is generally a look at some of their types of repairs. Next slide. And so they already have established eligibility guidelines. I'm hoping that we can plug in and play into their program. They, they, it needs to be owner-occupied, many of the things that we talked about last time, you have to be eighty percent of the area meaning income. And actually, this pie graph really kind of shows what we've had here in the City of Kyle, just our current homeownership and renter ownership. So we would have sixty-seven percent of our citizens or households would be potentially eligible for this program if they met, obviously, the other eligibility requirements. But you can see our current households are divorce, diverse in regards that we have about two-thirds homeowners and about another third of renters. Next slide. So as I mentioned briefly, they have forty-eight, forty-eight current households that are, have requested repairs in the current guidelines of the program. The households are smaller. They're really looking at the average household size of two for, from those forty-eight that have requested repairs. And then, more than eighty percent of the households have at least one of the house, one of the citizens in their house, or sixty percent are older, and then sixty-five percent of the households have someone with a disability that have already applied for this program. This list here is really the list that those forty-eight households have requested repair for. Next slide. So what's great about the Habitat program is we're able to lean on their current collaborators that they have within the program already. So they work with the Home Depot, the Veterans Affairs. So through some of the funding and other mechanisms that they have, they're really able to pull in their partners, and we're hoping to help utilize some of that, too. Their current program really kind of limits out or ranges at twenty K. We're actually hoping to have a pilot program with this year, top out ours at like ten thousand per households, and of course, we'll limit those that we partnership with those for the, for the households that are within the Kyle city limits. Next slide. So we're really trying to look with you and see, get your feedback about asking Habitat for Humanity to work with us to help with this home repair program. And then, we're not going to stop there. We're going to still work on making a list of organizations that provide assistance and services, knowing that Austin Habitat for Humanity has a lot of those network already, but we'll continue to kind of expand our networks and leads within Kyle and Hayes County. Next slide. And then, we'll work to let people know if this program is instituted, that they could apply for this, and then we'll continue to, to work on this for helping not only with our home repair, but for programs and maintenance. So with that, wanted to see if there was an opportunity for us to direct staff to implement the program, have any other ideas for us to do on the program, or something else altogether.
Does anybody have any, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, Mayor, yeah, definitely, I like the program, but one of the things that we're forgetting on the element here was, you know, structures that were abandoned, that we're thinking about taking down. It's one of the things I, I was really looking forward to seeing, and if there's a way we can find a way to do that, we're still implementing option one. I'd love to see it, because, I mean, I can think of a couple of structures in Kyle right now where the residents have reached out to us, see if there's any assistance to take down those old dilapidated houses, and we're not, I mean, we don't have anything right now, no, no kind of program, but great work. I liked the presentation, but if there's a way to incorporate that, I'd love it.
You may have any thoughts on that?
So with that, Mayor Pro Tem, you're, what you're asking is that the city tries to implement some kind of funding program to assist those that have implement some kind of funding program to assist those that have buildings that are damaged or that are old, or is it do, or something that has to deal with code enforcement?
Correct, I mean, I can think of one right now, just on Martinez Loop, that's burned down a while back, there's about three walls still standing in the roof, but, I mean, it's something that the resident doesn't have money to, you know, take down, they've asked for assistance, but, I mean, we're, I mean, we don't have anything, any programs right now that will help people with something like that, you know.
But they're not going back to live in that structure.
No, no. No, it needs to go down.
It's just demolishing and unusual.
But right now, it's a safety hazard, it's, it's probably got rodents in it, it's dangerous, and you worry about somebody actually going in there and falling down. I mean, we've, we've got kids in neighborhoods, it's in the neighborhood, so you just never know, it, right now, it's a safety hazard.
I don't think Habitat for Humanity would be.
No, they, they wouldn't, that's why.
Interesting, yeah.
But when we first started talking about this, we talked about structures like that and overgrown grass as well.
We're supposed to be in removing those kinds of structures as a city, it's part of our responsibility to structures that are.
If it's a dangerous structure.
That are dangerous to, to communities, kids, whatever.
It would have to come down.
And usually, we, we add a fee, we assess a fee to, a lien to the property, so who never that property sold, we would get reimbursed. I mean, this happens with mowing yards that are overgrown, I mean, there's, there's a, to clear title, you have to clear any, any fees.
But I, I worry about putting a lien on something where people are barely making ends meet.
Right.
That scares me, too.
I think, you know, this goes back a bit to like the beautification program, you know, something that, you know, we could have worked on a bit, but that's what, those were some of the issues I was trying to reference, reference us back to, but, but I agree, I see what you're saying, Mr. Rizzo.
I think, you know, removing dangerous structures is probably different than what this program is. We can certainly take a look at that and maybe come back with some kind of way to augment code enforcement. I think that might be better than trying to have Habitat for Humanity, because I don't think this is really in their wheelhouse.
Well, no, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that Habitat Committee, but what I was talking about is the early conversations that we had, and when we were talking about where we're going to put the funding here was also about, you know, overgrown grass and dangerous buildings, and some, that was the early conversations we had. This is a great program, but it doesn't cover everything that we gave direction to.
Yeah, well, maybe we, we may have misunderstood the direction that, I, I think we were looking at trying to repair buildings, not necessarily remove them, and so I.
That was part of the, but the Martinez Loop House did come in on that conversation we had early on.
I mean, the initial framework for this property improvement program was modeled off of another city, which I believe was before you took your, took your seat. I don't recall conversations, the conversation you're talking about, I don't, not saying it didn't happen.
Yeah, we, with all that said, I mean, we're happy to take a look at it, I, I think it's probably perhaps more of a code enforcement issue and, and perhaps assistance through the code enforcement, but.
I was going to say, because code enforcement now is scary, because now we're talking about taking property from someone.
Well.
Or, you know, if they can't afford it, then now we're going to start finding them, and that's not where we want to go as a city.
Yeah, I think, I understand where you're coming from, Mayor Protem, I, I think what we would do is look to have some kind of program that we could assist people if they needed assistance with that, but if there is a truly dangerous structure that someone can be harmed with, if it falls down or collapses, it does need to be removed, period, and, and there's a way, let, let us spend some time thinking about that. I just don't think that was certainly in my train of thought, I don't think in Melissa's train of thought, we can look at it and see what options that we can come back with you to. I just don't have those today.
All right, thank you.
Additional thoughts, discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to implement the program as proposed and collaborate with Austin Habitat for Humanity.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Hyzer, second by Councilor Harris, so we approve agenda item nineteen. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilor Tobias.
In the event it passes, which I'm sure it probably will, so right here, it's, will we get any kind of updates if we get applicants that apply for this, and we can get follow-ups like, you know, this will come back in the next couple of months, say, hey, we got three applicants, and this is the repairs that we're going to do? Because if this is something that a program that we start now, we work with them, and we see there's a need, like obviously, there's the wheelchair accessibility, we just waive the fees on those, to where, you know, eventually, we're going to need additional funding in the next year or so, you know, we could be able to get an update of like, hey, this is the program that we implemented, you guys said yes to. So far, we've repaired seven homes, water leaks, this, that, the other, and it's working, and, you know, staff is recommending next year we increase it.
Absolutely. And so we'll definitely work to provide you some feedback regarding not only the number of, of homes, I'm hoping that we'll be able to, to do a good pilot year and do that, but, but you're right, I, I think there's going to be, there's already 48 on this, this waiting list, again, all of them haven't been vetted against kind of the criteria, it's right now, it's just, we need this, this help.
Okay.
So they would need to go through that criteria, and you're, and you're right, we'll absolutely report back with, with how many homes we were able to help, and then, and then I'm hoping in a, in a perfect world, we'll, with this collaboration and some other stuff, that either Habitat can, can kind of stretch our dollars a little bit further, or we'll be able to pick up other opportunities to reach out to other organizations that are willing to help as well.
Because we can break it down, like we see a large, this next year, we have a lot more people that had plumbing issues versus pest and rodent issues. And then we can also maybe address it as a state level, hey, that's where in certain areas of town we need to work at.
Yep.
I'm good, thank you.
Councilor Harris.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
And also these, many of these homes would qualify for CDBG, should we choose to use CDBG funds in coming years for that?
Yes, I think that's something we need to look at a little bit more. I think Austin Habitat honestly has had some issues with using CDBG funds in the past with their other counties and organizations that they've worked in, just based on like the Davis Bacon funding and some of the other issues going with, with utilizing some of that funding. So they've really reached out to, to more hospital-type groups and other groups, but it's definitely an option we'll look into.
You know, Councilor Tobias brings up a good point, it's the data, I mean, making sure we get the numbers on how many people we've helped, what was the dollar amount, and making sure so that way when we're moving forward, we know how to fund it, and if we need to add to it as well.
Absolutely.
So data is going to be crucial, so, thank you.
And anyone else? Halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nate.
All right, motion carries six to one. Next up is agenda item number 20, consider approval of a resolution to submit the city council's nominations to serve on the board of directors of the Hayes Central Appraisal District. Mr. Mohit.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, for the record, I'm Prevez Mohit, City's Director of Finance. It's time again, council, for the Board of Directors nomination for the Hayes CAD or Hayes Central Appraisal District. So I'm going to walk you through real quick the process, the options, and the timeframe. So the city of Kyle has received a request from the chief appraiser of Hayes CAD for city council's nominations to serve on the board of directors of the Hayes CAD. The recently amended tax code requires that appraisal districts be governed by nine directors. The right, the nine directors are selected as follows, five to be appointed by the taxing units, three to be elected by majority vote at the general election by the voters of the county, and one seat is for the ex-officio director to be served by the county tax assessor, assessor-collector. The deadline to submit the nominations to the chief appraiser is before October 15th, 2024. The nomination must be submitted in the form of a resolution adopted by city council. The eligibility requirements for the nominee, there must be a resident of the district, must have resided in the district for at least two years immediately preceding the date the nominee takes office. An individual who's otherwise eligible to serve on the board is not ineligible because they serve on the governing body of the taxing jurisdiction. In other words, a council member is eligible to serve on the board. An employee of a taxing unit that participates in the appraisal district is not eligible to serve on the board unless the individual is on the governing body of the taxing jurisdiction. A person may not serve if they're engaged in appraising property for compensation in the preceding three years, or has been an employee of the appraisal district in the preceding three years. The recommendation by chief appraiser when considering a nominee, they ought to at least have some expertise in business management, information systems, computers, accounting, finance, real estate, and taxation. The term of the office, two director positions will serve a one-year term from January 1, 2025, to December 31st, 2025. Three director positions will serve a three-year term from January 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2027. Thereafter, all appointed director positions will serve a four-year term. The board meetings, the Hayes CAD board of directors usually meet on the third Thursday of every month at the district office located in Kyle, and usually, these meetings start at 4:00 PM. The total number of votes allocated to the city of Kyle, the allocation is based on actual 2023 tax levy by each unit in Hayes CAD. The total votes for Hayes CAD taxing units is 5,000, that's the total number of votes. The 2023 tax levy for all taxing units was 720 million plus. The 2023 tax levy for city of Kyle was 30.2 million, which gives us an allocated number of votes of 210, or 4.2% of the total 5,000 votes. The key dates and process steps, the election, the nomination and election is done in two steps. Before October 1st, the chief appraiser requests taxing units for nominations, that's what we're doing tonight. Before October 15th, taxing units submit nominations by resolution to the chief appraiser. Before October 30th, chief appraiser prepares ballot. So somewhere between October 15th and October 30th, the council has to adopt the resolution for the nomination. By October 30th, the chief appraiser prepares a ballot listing candidates nominated and sends to taxing units for casting their allocated votes. Before December 15th, taxing units cast their allocated votes and submit by resolution to the chief appraiser, this is the second step. Then before December 31st, the chief appraiser counts all votes received, declares the five candidates as elected who received the largest number of votes, and sends the voting results to each of the taxing units and the candidates. After January 1st, the elected board members take oath of office and elect officers. So the options we have for council tonight, option one, nominations by city council and approve the resolution today for submission to chief appraiser before October 15th, or option two, council does not make any nominations to submit and wait for the ballot that will come forth from the chief appraiser to cast vote by December 14th, and option three could be anything else that y'all decide. So if we could get some direction from council, we would surely appreciate that.
This is like deja vu from last year.
Yeah.
I feel like this is Spider-Man meme where everyone's pointing at one another, like, what do we do, what do we do?
Well, we get very little say, and we get 4% of a vote, so just keep that in mind. So historically, we've normally jumped in with the school district because they've got the lion's share as a sign of support for who they nominate, because who they nominate will be on the board. But if you want to throw some other names up there, the, it's unlikely that anyone from the other jurisdictions is going to throw their votes behind whoever we nominate, unless you've discussed with them something, so if you haven't.
Well, that's, that's kind of a nod ball thing to say, is that the other jurisdictions won't pass, depends on who the nominee is, right?
It does, but I'm just saying that if you haven't talked to them.
If that person has a rapport with those jurisdictions, it'd be important.
It could be, so if you got somebody, let's throw it out there, I do not care either way.
I'd like to nominate myself for the appointment.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion by Mayor Protem, second by Councilor Hyzer, that we nominate Robert Rizzo for the Hayes CAD board? Is there discussion on that motion?
Yeah, you know, I just feel like the municipalities need to have more say-so in, in this taxing entity, I mean, we talk to residents all the time about the taxes and how they feel about it, you know, every time we see the home evaluations, you know, we talk, we're the ones that are the boots on the ground, talking to the residents, and, you know, there's not really a whole lot we can do. I found that out last year when I was trying to contest something, it, you know, that happened with my property, and I was really upset about it because there was no one in the office to talk to me. And I just feel like, if, you know, as a city, we don't have that representation up there, or other cities as well, I think it's time to change that.
All right, any discussion on that motion? Halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up agenda item 21, this item's been withdrawn, it has a public hearing, but since the item's being withdrawn, no reason to open or close it?
No.
No one here to speak at it, because.
If there's anyone here who wants to raise their hand and say they want to speak, we could let them, but I don't see anybody.
Same for 22, so we're just going to skip them.
22 is not related, it is not being drawn.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought there were two items. So 21 is the annexation, which they have officially withdrawn, but the zoning request didn't come forward because they kept it back off. All right, so we're going to skip 21, go to 22. First reading, consider approval of an ordinance submitting Chapter 53 zoning of the Code of Ordinances to rezone approximately 1.54 acres of land from construction manufacturing to CBD 2 for property located 505 South Old Highway in 81, 81 in Hayes County, Texas. This item does have a public hearing, easiest zoning vote maybe I've had in eight and a half years.
Well, we still got, we still got to do it. All right, so we have 1.54 acres from CM to CBD 2. Y'all at the 9-3 meeting voted for a Chapter 380 agreement for the Hayes County barbecue, right there in the yellow triangles where they're going. 380 itself will help to free the cost of large water line to the site. It does need to be rezoned so they can build up to the build lines, which will match what you typically see in original town, and also remove uses that we don't want to see in downtown. From a comp plan perspective, it is in the regional commercial district there in red, the blue outline is the triangle where it's at. You're looking at high-density mixed-use, highway, retail, restaurants, office, et cetera. 1.454 acres for CBD 2, it will be in the TURs generating money to add to that balance, and P&amp;Z considered it on the 10th, y'all are considering it tonight, and if it goes to second read, it will be on the second. And then P&amp;Z voted five to zero to recommend approval. Just some standard, standards for the CBD 2 district, minimum of 2,500 square foot for the lot, three stories to 45 feet max, zero setbacks, a U ground floor commercial, second or third floor for apartments, and what have you. After this, they'll have to submit a preliminary subdivision plan, public improvement plans, spinal plats, site development permits, CUPs, building permits, et cetera. We recommend approving the zoning request.
All right, this item does have a public hearing, is, are there any objections to opening that public hearing? Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak? I'd really like to finally pass this, so I'd like to wait for a hot second until Zuniga comes back. Mr. Langley, he, he jumped out on, on an item, he's, Brian's already after him, so. All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, public hearing is now closed. Motion approved?
Second.
All right, motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilor Parshili, that we approve agenda item 22, is there discussion on that motion? Halls in favor, what's that?
I'm already ready, man, I can smell the barbecue already.
I can smell it, all right, halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero, is there any objection to this item being finally passed? Seeing none, this item is finally passed. No applause, please.
Thank you.
All right, next up agenda item 23, consider approval of an amended and restated interlocal agreement with the city of San Marcos in its final form for the San Marcos Regional Animal Shelter. Chief Barnett.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Jeff Barnett, Chief of Police, for the record. Tonight, we bring forward for your consideration to approve an amended and restated interlocal agreement with the city of San Marcos for providing the San Marcos Animal Shelter services to the city. The San Marcos Regional Animal Shelter has provided services to the city of Kyle since October of 2006, that was, those services were performed through an ILA, and tonight, they have an additional provision for two more years of service to the city of Kyle. Included in the ILA in your packet, you will see that they have. you will see that they have provided notice that they intend to cease regional operations and regional services to the city of Kyle on or about September the 30th of 2026. I have with me tonight our animal control supervisor, who works daily with the animal shelter and has, she would like to explain a few of the details for consideration in the I.L.A. Ms. Brianna Geddes.
Brianna Geddes, animal control supervisor, for the record. So the changes that we're seeing in this interlocal agreement with San Marcos finally gives us clear definition of what my animal control officers are responsible for. We've had verbal agreements for years, and we finally have it all in writing. So that's helping out our staff. They do want us to synchronize the city, our city ordinance with their city ordinance on four separate topics. Those are going to be stray hold periods, the trap neuter return program, which we already have in place. We've already done that, so we don't have to do that. Microchipping, mandatory microchipping, and spay neuter requirements for impound. We do have, we're working on a draft of that to bring back to council once we have that done. They are also asking for more participation in community events. So they are wanting us to do a minimum of four events throughout the year. They're either spay neuter-related, microchipping, or vaccination, community events. We've already been working on ideas of ways that we can implement that throughout the next year for them. And then the final thing that they are asking for in the I.L.A. is to give $10,000 towards spay neuter costs to prevent a litter. We already have that in our budget. We have the spay neuter vouchers that's going to PALS anyway. So we've already, already got that budgeted out for us to. And so the options would be to authorize and execute the amended and restated I.L.A. in its final form and continue participation as stated per the agreement. Withhold authorization of the amended, restated I.L.A. directing staff to provide an intent to withdraw from the agreement. Our recommendation is going to be receive a report and hold discussion and authorize the execution of the amended and restated interlocal agreement in its final form. Future plans moving forward with this termination date with San Marcos. We are needing to come up with a long, long-term option for the housing of our stray animals. Animal control and the shelters have shifted in these recent years to help support pet owners and their ability to keep their pets. We act like counselors on a daily basis to owners trying to figure out solutions and make better long-term solutions for their pets. The animal shelters need to provide facilities and community support to assist these owners in keeping their animals. And we need to have adequate space to accommodate the amount of animals in the community. One of the things that was requested of us was to get us some statistics on the quantity of animals we're bringing into the shelter and where we project those numbers to be. We have been ranging in the last six years anywhere from 500 to this current fiscal year, we're at 700 animals going to the shelter. Keeping in mind, that is, we've got about 93 animals at this point to date, going back for trap neuter return program. So we are seeing an increase in the numbers that we're seeing at the shelter, but a lot of them are going back into the community within weeks of impoundment. So we're guesstimating that we would probably be looking at housing somewhere between 700 to 800 animals a year based off of our current numbers. And then we are seeing about 1,000 loose animal calls throughout the year and ranging between 3,000 and 4,000 total calls for service during, during our years.
Mayor Council, I'll summarize two things. Number one, Brianna and her team do an amazing job of trying to get animals returned to their owners right here in the city of Kyle. So they do everything possible to return them before they ever take them to the shelter in San Marcos. And they've done a really good job using social media, phone trees, animal logs, so that they can keep up with pets that typically get out, and they can return those to their owners. So I applaud her and her team. I'll summarize by what are some of the steps that we recommend that we take into the near future. Number one, our recommendation would be that we hire a consultant and architect to assist us with determining those overall needs for our future shelter. As I mentioned earlier, the city of San Marcos has given us notice that they plan to cease shelter operations regionally and the services provided to the city of Kyle in September of 2026. Secondly, we would certainly need to locate a suitable piece of property and bring that back for city council consideration. Next, along with that consultant and architect, we would need to approve a design for a facility for the future, something that would serve the, the animal control officers and then the shelter services needs. And then lastly, we would bring back and finalize that plan and prepare an overall budget, consult with the city manager and obviously mayor and council, so that we can make those plans and be ready as, as soon as possible, 2026 or there, close to. And again, the ask for tonight is, I'll repeat, to approve the amended and restated I.L.A. with the city of San Marcos for shelter services and that staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Brianna, you got a minute? Hey, Brianna, what is the city of San Marcos doing as far as programming for animals? Do they do any kind of fostering or anything like that to help with the numbers they have there?
Yes, they do have an active foster program, and that's one of the key points in what we consider live outcome plans in these shelters is fostering rescue partners. There's a lot of factors in getting animals out of these shelters.
And what are they doing to get more people involved with fostering? Really, what are their outlets are using to encourage people to really promote that?
They've been sending all that information out on social media. We're sharing it as we can on, on our PD page and city pages to get that information out to the public.
I was just seeing if they were really promoting it. I think that's what my concern is. Are they really doing everything they can to promote that, to try to alleviate some of that overcrowding? With that being said, thank you, thank you. But with that being said, when we're looking at, I know what, what we're voting on today, but I want to touch on some of the stuff we're talking about here about hiring a consultant and architect. I would really like us to consider reaching out to the county. The county's been talking about a regional animal shelter for a while. Seeing if we can't form some kind of partnership to try to alleviate some of the costs, build something long-term. Doesn't have to be in the city of Kyle, could be in the county. But somehow we could, you know, be able to maximize our dollars by building something that's going to be sustainable for the entire county and being able to, you know, move forward in real time. I mean, it's kind of what I'm hoping on. Maybe we can meet that threshold. But one thing I've noticed is that every time we partner with the county, we've been able to accomplish some really good things throughout our city. I mean, it's, if you can look back to some of our infrastructure, we've done really good. So maybe it's some of the options we could keep in mind to move forward as we're thinking about designing this facility. Why not think about the partnerships we could do? And I'm just throwing that out there.
Councilor Ziegler.
Yeah, good points, Mr. Rizzo. Brianna and chief, do we know, do we understand, like, why they are leaving the I.L.A. cooperation? Is it a cost or overcapacity? Or they just, you know, just want to be alone now? I guess every, every city wants to be on their own and independent.
I'll give my first take at it, and I know that our city major may want to add to my comments. So we've known actually for several years that the city of San Marcos was considering such a move. I think as they consider their priorities, their city ordinances that they would like to enact, their policies that they would like to see for their community, I think they're considering that it may be easier to go it along and take care of their citizenry and the things that they want to do in the city of San Marcos. We certainly had a great partnership with them. We continue to have that great partnership. So I, I think it's just more of a decision of leadership in that city, in that community, to bring their operations in-house and be able to make the changes that they see fit for their city and not necessarily have to coordinate those with the other entities that currently participate.
Well, I do want to say thanks to your staff, to their staff, all the volunteers that, that really helped to, you know, get these animals out of the shelter and take care of them. It's really nobody's fault. I just think it's a, a problem as we grow. We have more houses. We end up having more animals. And unfortunately, many homeowners will, you know, surrender them. So they have to go somewhere. The only thing I'll say is from the background, and I'm only on the outside of it, I think the Pet Resource Center is more focused on veterinary assistance, nutrition, education. And it's not, has not been in my, I haven't seen it as a standard good practice shelter, which is, I think, what we're going to see, you know, needed for the growth that we have. And with the numbers that Brianna just explained, 800, you know, animals a year, 1,000 calls or, and then 3,000, well, 3,000 calls. It just seems like that's going to get bigger and bigger. I think that is a good, a good starting point is the 800,000, you know.
Absolutely, sir. And as mentioned by Councilor Rizzo, also, we would certainly want to keep all options open and look at every viable opportunity for the city of Kyle.
Right.
So I think you're right. We just look at all the different programs and try to bring forth the best package for your consideration.
And two years is a very short window. I mean, for the rules and regulations and the standards of this building is not your normal building. So it's, I'm glad you're being very proactive and bringing this forward to kind of move in that direction.
Yes, sir.
Vision and workshop topic, for sure, for next year.
Oh.
What is our, what is in the budget that we just approved? What's our amount that we give to the regional shelter roughly?
It's roughly around 300,000.
300,000?
Mm-hmm.
So 300,000 divided by 800 is $375 per dog?
Our number that goes actually to them is more like around six to seven, somewhere in there.
450 to $500 a dog.
We accounted for extra to account for when you have a facility in your own town, you're going to have more animals brought to your facility. And the ones that we keep at PD, those are.
So I mean, it's pretty easy to just drive them into the city limits and drop them off so they get taken care of. So I can understand San Marcos's consternation, but I don't think there's any scenario where we're going to be able to put this together for ourselves for $300,000 a year.
Don't, don't.
It's going to quadruple in price, probably, maybe more.
And I'll say they have a very active volunteer base, and that's, that's something we do not have yet in our community, the volunteers that would work.
This is a, an impossible task.
I know.
To, to have an operating facility 24 months from now is not possible. It's not even close to possible.
I, I think the conversations that I've, I've had with San Marcos, like the chief, as mentioned, they've been great partners and really great to work with. I think they'll give us some flexibility on that timeframe, provided that we're moving forward with this solution. If in two years we've done nothing and we haven't advanced the objectives very far at all, I think that'll be difficult for them to want to extend it. But if we're under construction, we're under design, something's going on, I think they'll definitely work with us. But it is a short window. We need to move quickly. I do think, Mayor, as you pointed out, this is going to be a much more expensive endeavor. I mean, ballpark figures for a facility like this are probably over 10 million. To get a facility that's going to be the type of facility that we'd be proud of, and then you've got all the staffing that goes with it, it certainly will be more than the $300,000 that we've been paying. But with that, you also have more control. You have better programming. You have the opportunities to do things perhaps that we've never done here in, in the city. But I think to the Mayor Protem's point, we'll be glad to bring you back a number of different options, service models, and show you what those might look like and see where we go with this. But we, we wanted to make sure, A, you knew that the I.L.A. did need to be approved and that that agreement is going to be ending, don't you? So we'll be bringing back some options for you. We just wanted you to be aware of that. It, it is a quick turn.
It's true on that end, and very true. Rizzo, you do bring up a point, but the way I look at it is that this unfortunately is our problem as a city, just like San Marcos. I know it'd be great if we could collaborate with Hayes County, but if it's going to be long-term, we're, we're going to have to flip the bill on this. This is just not a little pet shelter. I mean, we're not just talking dogs and cats. I'm sure we're talking about other animals too. Horses, probably goes, I mean.
That means still responsible for this.
Yeah. But I'm pretty sure we're going to be dealing with, with a lot more. The funding on it, the water, the facility itself, the staffing. And, you know, those people that were here about a year ago about the dogs and the cats, I sure hope they show up when we start, we start building this, okay? Because that's when, you know, you advocated very strongly about these animals. Now, now's the time for them to, to come in and aid and help out. So that's my call to all of those who were wanting to volunteer and we're here advocating for the spay neuter program. We are now in that situation to where we're going to have to start spending taxpayer dollars on these animals. And so I hope we can be able to have them come and volunteer and, and help out. And, but it's something now we're going to have to look at as far as the facility and, and then the options. A good idea, Mayor Protem, but I, I also think that we have to maybe try to look at it from, from our standpoint and, and then build from there.
Yeah, one, one of the things I want to also highlight is that it's just going to be dollars for the facility or any facility. It's going to be for education as well. I mean, the reason we're in the predicament we're in is because we haven't educated the public enough on what we can do to minimize the impact that we have in our communities with overbreeding, things like that, you know? Not, you know, giving more programming towards, you know, decreasing the number of animals out there is something that we, I think, could do better to see as well. But also thinking about, you know, something that was said here on the dais is that people, once we open a shelter, people from outside the city limits are going to come drop the animals off as well. So that's why I was thinking partnering up with the county. They're going to allocate dollars towards the shelter, maybe building something that's going to be able to provide for those outside the city limits that are going to come our way anyway. And this way, we share the cost. And that's what I'm looking at, is sharing the cost.
What are the other jurisdictions that are, have, received the same notice? What are they going to do? What's Buta going to do?
So I've spoken with the chief police from the city of Buta. He's certainly interested in, in our direction and what we're going to do. They have a very, very small number of, of animals that they actually take to the shelter. So he's asked us to consider them in our big picture as we move forward, and we would certainly look at their numbers. He sent those to me a while back, and they're, they're extremely low compared to our numbers in other communities. So I think he's going to see what we do first. He's certainly aware of the situation because they're going to be out on their own as well. They're going to do the same thing. They're going to see where the county moves forward with what projects they've have under consideration.
But everybody received the same notice?
Yes, sir.
For example, Hayes County.
Hayes County did too as well. Yes, sir.
Everybody's on notice.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, motion approved. All right, motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilor Tobias, that we approve agenda item 23. Is there discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. Next up, agenda item 24 and 25. They're together. Rosie, you want me to take them simultaneously, both items on Stagecoach? What do you think?
Sure, if you'd like to.
Agenda item 24, consider approval of task order number nine to Pape Dawson for PS and E, design of Old Stagecoach Road, portion of Old Stagecoach of the 2022 bond in the amount of $2,47,287.5. And agenda item 25, consider approval of task order number 10 to Pape Dawson for PS and E, design of Center Street portion of the Old Stagecoach Road project of the 22, 2022 road bond amount $1,799,557.5.
So we've got Joe Canlibbo here from Cape Breton. He can assist with this. The first item is to consider approval of task order number nine for Old Stagecoach Road in the amount of a little more than $2 million. This is associated with the November 2022 road bond. Proposition A for eight transportation projects across Kyle totaling 10.3 miles of new location, reconstruction, and widening projects to improve the city's transportation network. The project will improve Old Stagecoach Road from Six Creeks Boulevard to Center Street. In spring of 2024, council directed to proceed with splitting the Old Stagecoach Road project into three sections, done in an effort for property acquisition and utility location varies throughout the project. And you'll see the locations in green, blue, and red on the screen. And you'll see the locations in green, blue, and red on the screen. Alignment and design features were approved by council in January of twenty twenty-four. Progresses to final design will occur with approval of this task order. This is for development of plans, specification, and estimates for the Old Stagecoach Road project for two million forty-seven thousand two hundred eighty-seven dollars and five cents, and we recommend approval.
Any discussion on the motion? Motion approved agenda items twenty-four and twenty-five?
Second.
Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tobias, that we approve agenda items twenty-four and twenty-five is their discussion on the motion.
I've lived on this road for many, many moons. My parents have, and it's about time we get this thing done.
Hold some favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right. Motion carries seven to zero. Perfect. All right, two more presentations and then Councilmember Parsley's item. Next up is agenda item twenty-six, receive a report, hold discussion, provide staff direction regarding an overview of Parks and Recreation Department and capital projects. Mr. Lopez, welcome.
Greetings, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'm going to be providing a brief overview of Parks and Recreation for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. It's going to be very high level, and I want to move through very quickly to give you all the opportunity to ask questions on what's most important to you and the community regarding this plan. Okay, so just a quick overview, we're going to look at the organizational structure, op standards, some winter OJT cross-training opportunities, our team development strategies, QC, continuous improvement, and CIP, as well as what's ahead with future for the department. The goals and objectives that tie into that are we want to improve our service delivery and efficiency. We want to provide extremely high-quality standard level of service for this city and its park system. We want to create developmental and promotional opportunities for our team in career mapping. We want to establish internal controls as well as quality control for all of our system and programs. We want to provide transparency and dashboards for the community to see what's going on in their park system. And we want to build not only a fiscally sustainable department and park system, but also an environmentally sustainable system. And we're going to be talking about continuous growth and reinventing ourselves to ensure we're constantly meeting customer needs as the city grows. So very quickly, I'm going to just give you an overview of the org chart. So you have the executive team, which is comprised of the Parks and Recreation Director, a management assistant, and then the divisions that'll comprise our department, which will be, first is Parks Tech, which stands for Trails, Parks, Trails Environmental Conservation. It'll be overseen by the Deputy Director. You have the Cares Division, which stands for Community Aquatics, Recreation, and Event Services, overseen by the Assistant Director, and a new Business Management Section that oversees strategic planning and projects related. So this title should read Business and Strategic Planning, but this position, Business Manager, will oversee the department's spending plans for budget. It's going to ensure that we're compliant with operational procedures. It's going to move us towards CAPR accreditation. For those of you who don't know what that is, there are sixty-eight points of compliance over ten chapters for national accreditation. And we're going to talk more about that later, but they'll also oversee the, the building out and the implementation of master plan to ensure that, that all of our strategic, strategic plans coincide with that and the administrative projects and strategic plans that you all adopted recently that we adhere to that as a department and help move the needle. So for the Parks Tech Division, we have a project manager that's going to work with the Deputy Director as well as our Engineering Department. They're really specialized in our park projects for ensuring that we are competitively negotiating our professional services contracts. They're going to be in charge of construction administration. That's going to be from, all the way from design, all the way through construction, notice to proceeds, pre-con meetings, making sure that pay apps are paid on time and that we're executing and completing our CIP projects in a timely manner. Also, they're going to be reviewing landscape ordinance, tree ordinance, and ensuring we're compliance, compliant with all planning and development standards. For the Parks Tech Division, we also have a, a new Conservation Division. We're really excited about this division, and, and we talk about the pillars of Parks and Recreation. We talk about health and wellness. We talk about access. We talk about conservation. This team will be overseen by a Conservation Manager, somebody who has a heavy background in wildlife conservation, urban biologist. They'll oversee the Trails Division because most of our trails are soft surface and run through our most environmentally sensitive areas. This makes sense. That, that includes our floodplain, our riparian zones.
You made me happy when you said, hey biologist, I'm like, science is coming to city Kyle.
Science is coming, yes, sir.
All right.
It'll also oversee our integrated pest management. So for those of you who don't know what integrated pest management is, it's a scientific and sustainably-based approach that evaluates how we treat pests. So we look at the least impactful method for managing pests that, when we consider the economics and risk to people, property, and to the environment. And also a new Horticulture, we're going to call Sustainable Landscape Division, that oversees all of the gateway and park ornamental bed areas so that we're, we're meeting water requirements, we're planting native and adaptive species and are, you know, sustainable in terms of cost, making sure that it's the right plant for the right place, and we have a staff that has the skill and the talent to maintain that. The Conservation Manager will also be responsible for outreach to the community. We're talking HOA, school districts, and education, environmental programming. And then this team will also have a heavy part in developing all other divisions of Park Maintenance and Operations.
David got a question?
Yes.
On the Horticultural Supervisor, will that include the community garden?
It will include some liaisons to the community garden as well.
Thanks.
The other division under Parks Tech is Beautification, which oversees our gateways and our right-of-ways. That's comprising of four crews that sort of divide east and west, and also an electrician team that oversees all of our city-owned lighting in our right-of-ways and parks. And one new strategy this team will be implementing is going to be on a three-tier standard for mowing and maintenance. Currently, we average about two-week cycles on our right-of-ways for mowing. The county averages about, they're, they're averaging two-month cycles. And so we think two weeks is good for most properties, but we also know that in our high-visibility, highly-programmed corridors, we, we would like to arrive at like that one-week maintenance schedule.
I'm glad you said that because you said we have four crews. How many persons per crew do we have?
I, I believe it's around four folks per, per team.
For, for each one?
For each one of those, those crews.
We had four per team. Double check on that. I think your math might be a little off, but definitely you need four, four guys per team. But I don't, I remember seeing somewhere a while back where we were shorthanded in some of the trucks. Just make sure that we've got four per team because you're looking at two mowers and then two guys weeding as well. So just making sure we have that, please.
Yes, sir. As long as we're fully staffed, we're, we're at those levels. But yeah, that gives us most economies of scale to your point when it comes to managing right-of-ways. But to arrive at the, again, I think we do a pretty good job at the biweekly properties, and, and that's probably leaps and bounds on some of the adjacent county properties that we're seeing. But in order to arrive at that without increasing budget, we think that that is certainly within the realm of possibility. And so our plan is to take some properties that are maybe on ETJ or some of those adjacent county right-of-ways to monthly cycles. We're still ahead, you know, in doubling the frequency of service ahead of county by an entire month. You get one additional service. But again, that's going to allow us to then reallocate resources to look at our major corridors and give them the top-notch level of service. So again, that's a three-tier model, and we're going to be pivoting. This is going to be a work in progress. So if we see that something's not effective, we're going to have the flexibility to make adjustments as needed. Okay, so then we have our Parks Maintenance and Operations Division. So we used to have a site-based model for how we maintained our parks, and that might mean that this one crew stays at this one park, and so does all the equipment within that crew's inventory. And so we saw things like a large area fifty-nine, ten mower, which they're about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars each. It's creme de la creme Cadillac for finished cut production mowing. But because of the site-based model, they stay at one site, and they may, it may only take one day to mow these one or two properties, and then the mower just sat for the remainder of the week. And so we looked at models to say, hey, where, where are we weak at? Where do we need improvement on? We saw it was our mowing. We saw it was our, our playground standards. We saw it was our amenities, our signage, our pavilion maintenance, even restroom cleanliness, forestry operations, and reforestation. We said, how, how do we, how do we find efficiencies? Are we really operating the best we can? And so just taking the simple analogy of the mower, we said, what will happen if we ran this mower four or five days a week on our large acreage properties? And we began to run efficiencies and just build out. We realized that, hey, to meet ideal standards, we need to be looking at playgrounds with a very high-level inspection at least weekly. We should be maintaining our restrooms daily. We should be tackling litter daily, receptacles and ground litter. So we started tightening up and said, can we meet those standards? As we evaluated those efficiencies, we realized we, we can. And that was exciting news for us. We didn't have to ask for any additional monies. It just was, it's just a different model, which we call a function-based service. And so now we have a playground and amenities team. We have a clean team that oversees restrooms and litter. We have two strike teams, and so we don't call them mow teams, we call them strike teams because while they're at the sites, if they see that there's a limb down or something that, you know, may need some minor repairs, there's minor graffiti abatement, they're going to address that before they leave the property. Because as a resident, you see, hey, there's a team of parks crew there, and they just left the park. All they did was mow, and they left, there, there, there was a lot of hazards left behind. And so strike teams are all-encompassing. If there's something that will delay their schedules, then they submit a work order or talk to the supervisor to get a different crew out to address, you know, the bigger matter. If there's a large graffiti incident, for instance. Also, the large mowing crew will have two large-area mowers that'll be running at minimum four days a week, doing nothing but mowing, and on a swing day, they might assist with any other function. Will especially need that to help supplement litter on Mondays after the weekends.
So their job is mowing and littering, picking up litter as well?
Strike teams will pick, they, they won't mow over the litter. They're going to pick up ground litter.
You're talking right now, you said those teams for mowing and picking up litter as well?
Yes, sir. The clean team will be responsible for litter and restroom maintenance, so we keep those daily cycles.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Also irrigation. We didn't have really somebody devoted to irrigation. And so it's so important to, especially with our watering restrictions, that our irrigation is operating at the highest level of efficiency and also having a team that can pull permits. There'll be a supervisor on this group that's a licensed irrigator that can help expand systems during the winter months, and we'll talk more about some of those winter programs. Okay, and last but not least, we have the Cares Division. And so that's our Recreation Division that oversees aquatics, our community programs, our all-inclusive programs that Councilmember Tobias alluded to earlier, as well as our Events Team. And so we have three direct reports for the, to, reporting to the Assistant Director, one over those recreational and aquatic programs, one over therapeutic recreation, and one that will be over all of the events, large and small. We've also moved the pull mechanic under Recreation because it made sense for them to work very closely with the aquatics coordinators and team on pool maintenance. They'll still oversee ornamental fountains, but there's a lot more guidance and economies of scale that we realize with some of those moves. Also, we realized, hey, we're not as strong as we need to be when it comes to promotions of some of the great things that we're doing out there. And so we moved a, a staff, a staff member that primarily focuses on interpretive design and promotional design over to Recreation so that we can assist on getting more, getting more advertisement on, on the great things we're doing. And if parks still need some interpretive assistance, they would put in a work order to rec services for that assistance. Operational procedures, we're going to be creating for every division. And this is important as a level of service that we build manuals that are easy to, easy for staff to use, that have photos and diagrams, something that we can bind and update annually as science changes, as technology changes. And we have these procedures that keep us coinciding with the highest level of efficiency and have work plans. Included in those documents will be our service levels and standards of care. And so for Recreation, that might mean how many, how many students or attendees to one counselor. That might mean what makes or breaks a program. So if we have programs that have minimal attendance, if they're below a set threshold, that program may not make, and then we reallocate those resources to other programs as needed. And also frequencies and schedules, again, in a manual that's easy to reference and easy for training new staff in. And this is also scalable. I mentioned we're going to reevaluate these annually. And so if we need to adjust up or down based on funding, based on demand, that, this is easy to scale. We're going to talk about stand, are we going to implement design standards for parks? And this is going to be a crucial piece of the, of the master plan and gaining community input on what you want to see in your parks, for instance, in playgrounds at minimum. The community may want shade at every playground. They might want poured-in-place or accessible surfacing in lieu of the engineered wood fiber, and so we would incorporate that into design standards. We want to look at park-grade amenities that stand the test of time, that will last the full year of the bond, that are vandal-proof. We want to look at SEPTED considerations, which is basically crime prevention through environmental design. We don't want to build hiding places in our parks. We don't want to reduce visibility by what we install. We want to make parks safe for unscripted play. And also, we want to meet all these basic requirements when it comes to a new build-out or a rehabilitation project. So O and M is something that not a lot of cities talk about, but it's, it is so important because it's one thing to build out your, your capital program and to get shiny new things, but once you cut the ribbon, the useful life clock starts. And so usually some of these are like a fifteen to twenty-year lifespan, and we've got to talk about the maintenance that's required. And so in some cases, when we're doing a, a rehab project and we're replacing playground for playground and nothing's changed, that might be a wash. But if we're getting a playground, taking it from a three-thousand-square-foot top lot to a dual top lot and five-to-twelve grade school playground, we just expanded our footprint. We expanded the amount of time it takes to do an inspection on these properties. And we want to make sure that we're asking and, or at least communicating the budget impact that that, that's going to have with every project. And so, like I said, in some cases you'll have where there's, there's no change. In some cases, it might require an increase, but we're going to look at the personnel involved, taking, taking it down to every base metric for every function we perform that I just discussed. And so for instance, litter, what's the average time it takes to service a litter receptacle? Based on the acres of this park, how many litter receptacles should we have? And factor in the programming that occurs there, what's the amount of time required to service the litter daily by the acre? And so all we need to know is how big is this park? What's the programming? And we run metrics against all that, and we develop O and M. So I mentioned in, winter in-service projects. And so as you all know, we have a, a growing season. You all have yards at home, and you know that from end of November, the grass is slowing down. And then you don't start seeing those, the, the growth of our local or native plant materials until maybe mid-March. So what do we do with that downtime? Well, that's ideal time for training and developing staff. It's an ideal time to cross-train on projects and to have on-the-job training, things like athletic field renovations, maybe installing new drinking fountains, replacing furnishings, managing our perennials in our ornamental beds with our annual cutbacks. It might, it's the ideal planting window for not just perennials, but also for, for trees. You could also do wildflower area maintenance during the late fall and, and winter months. This is a great time to do your community tree planting events, to install or expand your irrigation, to do major repairs. And so when patrons, they get used to seeing this model, and they know that they're going to come back in the spring, and they're going to see their parks have enhanced and they've changed. But also, we can have on-the-job workshops and saying, hey, if you need skills, team, in these areas, and you, you primarily mow, but you want to learn athletic fields, you're going to go work with this athletic field group. We might bring an in-house trainer and do a workshop to renovate one of the athletic fields at, say, Greg Clark Park. This is a good segue into our staff training and development. And so you guys saw the org chart, and we want to provide upward mobility for staff. I wish I would have had this as a new park employee, as a, as a young person, and seeing the opportunities that are out there in the fields of, of park and recreation. But if you come in for, say, as a part-timers entry-level staff, we're going to, we're going to invest in you. We're going to develop you. We're going to show you all the possibilities out there in this great field of park and recreation that you might promote into a, from a, a maintenance worker to a, a senior maintenance worker or maintenance worker two. From there, you might go with training that we give you and in-house certification programs to a crew leader. Crew leader, your opportunity to get certifications or other licensing and move into supervisory roles and so forth up the ladder. But this is an investment in your team that makes your department attractive. It's going to separate you from others. We want the city of Kyle Parks and Recreation Department to be a talent factory where staff are exceeding even promotional opportunities. That's not the worst thing in the world for cities to, to, to see you as, as, and your models as something so attractive that that's where they want to poach from. We want to create all the opportunities we can for staff. for staff. Um, but if their skill sets start to exceed what's available out there, then I would personally write a letter of recommendation to benefit in their, in their career and what they've invested into our team. But we want to, we, we believe we can keep most of those staff here and happy and invested in so they see that the sky's the limit for them and what they can do. And in turn, we get the most talented team in the region and maybe even the state. Uh, inspections and quality control. So I mentioned a lot of in-house training, but what about, um, and we're, I mentioned also bringing professionals who have certifications and licensing and, and they're ready to go out of the box. But inspections are going to go a long way with developing and training staff as well. They're going to be able to take an inspection sheet for playgrounds, for grounds, and they're going to be able to triage. And it's going to walk them through what they're going to be looking for. So some examples, um, I, I've, I've got photos of here. And so, uh, you're going to be looking from, from sky to, to, you know, to trees, to what's on the ground, what's underground, making sure that you walk through every step. You give a rating, you give a recommendation based on the standards. If it exceeds what you're able to do at the time, then that becomes a work order that the supervisor will generate that goes into your system, that has an estimated start time, completion time. We have, um, we're under contract now for the implementation of Cartograph, which is the Cadillac of all work order systems. Um, I was very pleased to join Kyle and see that we were using Cartograph because with this, staff will be able to, w- once we set schedules, we put it into Cartograph system and it's like the gift that keeps on giving. If we say Steeplechase Park is mowed every seven days by this team, it's going to generate a work order every seven days. All staff has to do is enter the hours per employee, um, that they were there performing that specific task. And you close the work order and it's going to generate the data on the backend. And so I can pull numbers on how many hours it takes to mow annually Steeplechase Park, what the cost associated is. You, you can run it any number of ways. The data's there. And then going back to the dashboards and transparency, we're going to be reporting on that and showing how much bang for our buck we're getting and how much service we're providing to the community and, and, and parks maintenance. So in continuous improvement, uh, I mentioned earlier, we want to evaluate how well we're doing. We want to evaluate if we need to change or pivot anything. And this is something that's going to be done annually. So for instance, with recreation, we're taking a, uh, a model for life cyclical of a product from the Boston Consulting Group, and we've adapted it to recreational programming and events. And so you see a star, question mark, cash cow and a dog. And I'll give you an example. We see events that are, um, doing really well, and there are perennial events, that goes into our, say, cash cow. Um, and in fact, I'm going to advance ahead a bit. We're going to adapt this as to call it Rising Star, question mark, Shining Star and Fading Star. And so if you're one of those events that's a perennial staple, you're, you're a shining star. And so we feel like we just want to improve on you and adjust every year. But if you, you're an event that maybe doesn't meet the thresholds, um, and we're like, well, maybe we're just not promoting well enough, you might go into the question mark category. And we're, we're going to be evaluating this closely, talking to the community and council about how they feel about this particular, particular event and what we can do to make it better. And that might transition back to, say, a cash cow. Uh, then you have a rising star. And so, um, for the rising star, those are your events where it's like, hey, we need to pilot this. This is something that is the future of Kyle. Um, but we don't have the funding right now to make a total launch. We're not really sure if, you know, we think it's going to be a success and a hit, but let's, can we reallocate, say, something from a fading star that hasn't met thresholds, that isn't meeting numbers, that the community doesn't really support or attend, and reallocate a little bit of that to pilot a program as a rising star? And then if we see, in evaluating the metrics, that, hey, this is really successful and everybody loves it. It, it's just as expected, then that could transition to become our shining star perennial event. And we may come the following budget cycle to ask for additional funding and, and talk about how much we buy for, for what's, what's approved in the budget process. Okay, so now we're going to talk about, um, CIP. And these are some stalled projects I'm going to run through really quickly. And so, um, some of you asked about the, um, exercise stations. Um, that's called, we call it the National Fitness Core Project, NFC, which is slated for Lake Kyle. And so where we're at with that is, uh, Park Board approves some of the artwork that's going to be, uh, as a mural, uh, piece to this, this fitness set, uh, last meeting. And they, they recommended a little bit adjustments to the artwork, which is an homage to, to Lake Kyle. Um, and then we'll bring that back to council for consideration and then find the appropriate place at Lake Kyle for installation. And so we anticipate that we'll be able to start that construction in December. Plum Creek East Trail, this, um, so we have about $4 million between city and, and county funds for, for trails. And so this Plum Creek project is pertinent to, um, east of 35, in particular between Lake Kyle or spanning Lake Kyle to Waterleaf Park. And there's a lot of segments along, uh, this corridor that we already own. And so with about 3.6 million dollars remaining from that budget, we've asked the consultant to go from preliminary engineering review at 30% to a full design package. So once they give us that bid proposal back, we'll be bringing this back to you all for, uh, for consideration so that we can maybe go into construction as soon as the summer to create a spine that gives access throughout that corridor and connects to our soft surface trails throughout. Um, Plum Creek Trail, part of that same funding bucket is, um, a fitness station project that the Trails Committee is currently reviewing right now. Uh, this fitness station that they were partial to is manufactured by, by Burke. And so, uh, there were some recommendations. We're trying to keep this within its budget, but we're going to continue to work through Trails Committee to get this right. And then in all likelihood, it's going to exceed, um, uh, the amount that we're authorized to spend. We're going to bring this back to council for, for consideration. There's a restroom project at Plum Creek Trail at, at the Button Creek Trailhead, and we're slated to begin installation here next month. And then the skate park at Greg Clark Park, we get a lot of questions about. And the status update is this project was stalled to allow new staff like myself, time to assess. Um, we're going to need to bring the final concept that was designed by SPA back to council for review and feedback. And, um, if we say, hey, we, this is something we like, or we want to make adjustments, we'll work with SPA to alter design or to move forward. We might be able to use a cooperative purchasing contract to use them to go ahead and build out, because this is the company that's been involved throughout the community input process. They're also a very reputable company in the industry for skate parks. They're one of two, uh, 800-pound gorillas that build these things. So when I saw we had a project that was designed by SPA with all this great community input and involvement, I, I was really excited about that.
Yeah, I was really pleased to see that this is going to progress because I was on parks when we started that whole process with them. And they did some phenomenal community involvement sessions that, um, were very well attended, perhaps the best well-attended I've seen so far.
Yes, ma'am. And Mayor Proton Kayak was also heavily involved in the inception of this project, as you, as you recall. Post Oak restroom. And so, uh, we have a ribbon cutting, uh, for September 29th with the community garden. We're going to open the restroom. There's just some minor ADA punch list items that remain. Uh, the community garden, September 29th, we're excited for that ribbon cutting and to get that, um, those garden plots, um, under agreement. We also are very excited about a park and recreation building for staff to help decompress, um, the amount of staff we have in Lake Kyle, as well as the parks building on, on Veterans Drive. Um, we're currently undergoing negotiations for, for that building. And then there was a project on the stalled list that was for, it, it was identified as BMX. I've also heard from the Trails Group that this might be like a mountain bike type project, uh, or it could be like a hybrid of both, like a, some kind of a bike playground to be featured along one of the vibe, vibe nodes. And so we're going to resurrect this project and, um, we might start with a feasibility study on what, where's, where it's most appropriate. We'll talk with Stan Tech and the master plan and see if that's the right place for it, or if we want to collaborate, uh, or, or, um, with maybe some consultant to supplement what Stan Tech's doing. Whatever the best path forward is, we'll get the right input from everybody and move on this project because it is currently funded and it is something that the community has, um, been pretty adamant about.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes, sir.
Maybe on 21, uh, is your upcoming, uh, pilot programs. Did we get that slide?
Um, I'm sorry.
Did you present that slide earlier? I'm sorry, because I had Heroes Memorial Park.
Oh, yes, Heroes Memorial. Did I miss, did I skip a whole area?
I think we, you just, it's a, I just want to make sure we got it covered.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, is it at the end? We, we also have one on. I'm, I'm glad you stopped me because, um, Mary Kyle Hartson restroom was also brought to my attention that we had a restroom originally slated for that property. So we're going to be reevaluating the right type of restroom for that park.
So make sure we're checking in with the Texas Historical Commission. That's what stopped it last time.
Yes.
Making sure that we submit everything, talk to them, and we're working with them closely, please.
Yes, sir. The one-size-fits-all restroom is, is not appropriate for a site like Mary Kyle Hartson, uh, uh, similar to Heroes Memorial, which we'll discuss shortly.
Thank you, David.
Yes, sir. Okay, so now we're going to talk about the new projects, 2025, starting with the Pro's Master Plan. We've talked ad nauseam about this, but it's just so exciting for us and it's going to shape the, the next 10 years for Kyle. Uh, give us the direction and it's going to be heavy in community input from not only, um, the residents of Kyle, but also boards and commissions involved. And, um, this is so important that we get the right data, that we ask the right questions because this is our future. And also, we're going, in anticipation of, of projects for 2025 and what's coming on the master plan, we felt it appropriate to start the RFP process for a park-specific rotation list. Um, engineering's been great. Uh, Legion's been very supportive in his team. And I've been able to pull some projects that we're going to talk about shortly from his engineering rotation list. But we need landscape architecture firms who really specialize in these things. And so that RFP should be advertising later this month. Heroes Memorial. So we have a budget of a quarter million. We have been, um, working with Cadence McShane, the original design builder for the park, to, uh, design the appropriate restroom for this park. Uh, this project is well within, within, um, budget to get the right thing for this site. And we're just awaiting a proposal return from Cadence McShane on the design and build services they would provide that we can then bring back to council for consideration. So we anticipate completion. I, I would say later spring, maybe early summer for that restroom, um, hopefully in time for some of, some more programming at the site.
Would, would this be considered an outdoor style restroom or the lobby that we originally were bringing forward a couple of years ago that has the air conditioning inside for, for veterans?
Uh, this would be an outdoor restroom with, with drinking fountains built in, but, uh, you know, in, indoor units and appropriate space. There's already a, a footprint at the site that Cadence McShane said was originally slated for the restroom. And so they're able to use economies of scale to ensure that they can, that the MEP is going to be there for them a, at the site.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Lamburger Lake Improvements, budget is $400,000. Uh, we're already working with WGI from that engineering rotation list to design a fishing pier with, with maybe a shade structure. And so we anticipate going from preliminary engineering review to full design by winter 2024. Um, that design hopefully wouldn't take more than 90 days that we can move to, to let for construction, maybe by, by late spring.
I really like that, uh, rendering. I, I think something like that would be amazing. So whatever y'all come up with, if it's supposed to that, it's going to be amazing.
Yeah. And, and that rendering I took from an, another project that we did, but, um, yeah, from the aerial view, those were two shade structures. And there's like a, there's like a fishing well in the center. So it's kind of a lofty ideal, but we'll try to really stretch that 400,000 to get the most bang for our buck for the site.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a question about that. Um, access to that lake is a little funky. I've, I've walked over there several times. So are we looking at making a path down to the lake or anything?
Well, this site is included in the master plan process. And so that, that, that park will get its own master plan.
It's amazing how many people come from elsewhere to fish this lake. It's got apparently great fish.
Yeah, it, it's, it's a really nice property and we're excited about the project. But, um, in talking to Stan Tech, we went and toured Lamburger Lake property to, you know, all these undeveloped parks that needed a master plan. Uh, and they were really excited about this fishing pier as well. And so it wouldn't be of any conflict for anything that they build out for the future. Okay, so Steeplechase Park improvements, we've got a budget of about 100, uh, 700,000 to include, uh, parking lot, some lighting, some landscaping, some charging stations. And so this is also under PER with HDR. And so the timeline is we want to get the full design in the winter and start construction by the summertime. Um, Steeplechase is a really popular park along with Waterleaf. And so we, we, these are really time-sensitive for us. And the first two dominoes for getting these, these parks rolling when, um, up to snuff. So same with Waterleaf, we've got 1.175 million for parking lot shade landscaping. Um, it's a, it's a big park. And also you've got some ballfields there. And so if there's any residual funding, we might look at making some improvements on the athletic fields. There's a lot that we can do there. I've got a few examples of, of, of like bio swells in some of our parking lots. We're really looking into the landscaping, saying, how can we really reclaim some, some runoff water, build sustainable parking lots, um, reduce heat island effect, but also make it practical, programmatic for, for the needs and the traffic.
I'm really glad that you've been looking at the lighting, Steeplechase and these parking lot improvements. And yes, there are a lot of good, like baseball fields out there that just need
Yes, sir.
more maintenance, right? So it'd be really helpful to see all of that. Is this CIP, the 25 million parks budget?
Yes, yes. Twenty, 25 million over, over five years.
It's a, it's a good reinvestment in our older existing parks, uh, all throughout the city.
Yes, we're really excited. Um, this one I'm really excited about. Uh, this is the Lake Kensington Nature Park. Uh, the budget is $70 million over FY25 and FY26. We've got a RFP that's going to be advert, it was supposed to be advertised yesterday. We had some delay. And so we're going to be advertising it this Monday. Um, we might shrink down the opening window. We had it open for a month to get, get bids and proposals in. Uh, we might shrink that to three weeks, but, um, we're going to include in that the environmental assessment that was done on the park. I've taken some urban biologist out, uh, and some master naturalists to look at the site and give me their opinion, some well-respected colleagues in the industry. And they were really jazzed about this site. They said, this is such a pristine site, right in the middle of Kyle. Um, this is going to be a very attractive draw, not just for the city, but e- even, even the region with this budget. And so, um, there's no telling what, what these RFPs are going to propose and the, the possibilities. I have a few, uh, conceptual examples from other nature parks within the state of Texas. But this is going to be a heavy, we're, we're, we're going to require in the RFP, public input. Um, we want to see the, the best concepts that they can muster up to, to get us towards this goal of being, again, a regional draw for, for nature parks. Um, I think we're going to be really pleased with the results for the, for this project.
Yeah, this is a pristine piece of property. I mean, uh, Councilor Tobias took me out there on Sunday. I hadn't been out there in 20 years. I used to duff on, on that property when I was a kid. But, uh, what do you call it? I hadn't seen it from the level that I got to see it up on that hill. And it was just a gorgeous piece of property. Really excited about the possibilities. I mean, just seeing it, uh, even mowed down a little bit would be an amazing place to go visit. But, uh, when we build something there, it's probably going to be the crown jewel of the city because it's just a pristine piece of property. The way the lake is shaped, I mean, the possibilities are endless. So let's not shortchange ourselves. Let, let, let's, let's build something that's going to be sustainable and beautiful for the residents forever.
We're, we're going all in on this one. We're, we're really excited. And I just got wetlands. It's also has prairie plant species that were identified. I hadn't seen switchgrass my entire time in Kyle. This property has switchgrass.
And then the Trails Committee, I think that they're really excited about this one too. I sort of let them know that it was coming and to keep their eyes on it. So they're excited to, to hopefully get involved in this as well.
Yes, sir.
So two, two thoughts on this. Uh, n- um, number one, uh, is that I think we need to make sure from the outset that when we're doing the, uh, preliminary design work, we're designing for the entire circumference of the park, even in the areas owned by WZ Investments and the, the areas owned by South Lake Ranch. So the concept is for the whole thing. And then we can, that helps us to take the concepts to South Lake Ranch HOA and show them what we're planning, uh, as well as to the WZ Investments Group who have a development project that they'll probably be working on in the coming years. Uh, but they're going to have to dedicate the, the floodplain anyway. Uh, and, and so this would be an opportunity for us to say, hey, why don't you go ahead and dedicate this to us so that we can actually construct this? And then it will be your access point, uh, in, in lieu of their parkland development fees and whatever else. So, uh, I, I do want to, unless y'all have an objection, I think, I think we should make that really clear that we want this, th- these architects and design firms to design the entire circumference of the park. Uh, and then secondarily, I think that it would be good to have council involvement along the way so that it's not just staff reviewing the different firms and proposals and bringing something more baked back to us, but that, that we actually have council members like in a task force situation who are there interviewing these firms, taking the, the political dynamics into consideration as well as just the vision, the, the, you know, from the policymakers who are doing this project. So I'm not saying we have to make those decisions now. This is, but I do think those two things in particular, a task force that gets by the, uh, by the... a task force that gets by the 10, 15 responses due, so that we've created the task force by then, to go through the proposals and be a part of the group that makes the recommendations. And then having them design the circumference, the full circumference of the park.
No, thank you. Okay, and so I believe this is the last slide and so we're moving sort of to the crescendo now. And so working towards being an award-winning organization that is accredited. So we have goals to distinguish ourselves as an industry leader, to show credibility within the community, that we have adopted the best management practices, that we complied to all of the criteria by national standards and that maybe we've separated ourselves as the top 1% or 2% of all park agencies in the nation. We think this is an attainable goal with this plan that has just been laid before you. Within two years, we want to be, really one to two years, start racking up some awards at the state level, at the regional level, and eventually the national level. And then also positioning ourselves to start working towards submission for accreditation within the three to four-year window. And I'll take any additional questions and feedback at this point.
Councilman Parsley.
I was not going to say anything because I really want to go home, but I have to. You addressed so many things that were like music to my ears. You talked about efficiency, the standards of gear, scheduling, which I am so big on it. Talk about having a manual that has outlined procedures for new staff members. That's something that I have even talked about before when we had the emergency manager coordinator. It's something that brings me back to like my graduate school days. So all of those things, having metrics and having, you know, something that you are scheduling ahead of time to prevent damaging or extending the life expectancy of parks, equipment and all of that. So I'm really excited to see how this is going to play, especially because we have had so much feedback about issues with our parks or the pumps or like this is not taken care of or the bathrooms or whatever. So I'm excited to see how you are addressing all of that. So that was really good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Parsley.
Yeah, just wanted to highlight a great presentation, by the way. I love the presentation. It was great. But I, one of the things that you really emphasized was building to the highest quality. That's something that I want to reiterate is like the skate park that we've got coming. I mean, that's something we could use in two facets, not limiting ourselves. It could be a skate park, but also a, you know, BMX park as well. Corpus Christi did a great job with what they had, but then they went back and redid it. And it's an amazing complex area and encompasses both skateboarders and bike riders. And they're there at the same time. It's amazing. Really building to that level of usability is important. The other thing you talked about, this is Texas, and I love that you said shade structures because anytime we put a playscape out in the middle of an open field and without shade, nobody's going to utilize it. I mean, it's tough. It's only a couple of months that you get to use it or early in the morning and most kids are in school early in the morning. So making sure that we do build to the standard where people, it's user-friendly, where people can actually go out there, utilize it is important. And then just continue to grow up. I'm really excited to what we see. But really what I want to say to council is thank y'all for investing into the park system. This is the first time that I've been on a dius that we've really made a huge investment in our parks, our aging parks and all our park systems. But it's not just in the structures or anything. It's in the staff as well. The way we are now hiring professionals for the right jobs is important. But I love the training aspect that you talked about, helping people move up through the system, getting them trained. That's really important when you're, you know, developing, especially if you have somebody that has been on the ground, working with their hands in the soil, as we say, and now they're working their way up to a management position. You know that they're going to have a big love and care for the facility that they're maintaining and that's something that's really, really important. So I love that part of your presentation. I'm glad that you're implementing that. That was a great idea and I just want to compliment you on that. I think that's really going to set us apart as a city for retention, but also making an environment where people want to be here and that's really important. But yeah, I think it was a great presentation. Just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
If I could add real quick, I'll be very brief as well. But it's a presentation like this and it's something that holds true to myself. And I'm going to just also say for Councilman Mayor Protim Rizzo, we grew up in this small little town. The only thing that we had growing up was an elementary school. And that was our only park that we ever had. And then we were lucky enough to be able to have the janitor open up the gym for us during the summertime. So if we wanted to go swimming, we would have to either parents take us down or we would catch a school bus driven by a teacher here that would take us to the swimming pool. So coming back from the roots of all of that to see where we're at now, it's just, you know, amazing. And so I'm glad you're on board. You know, we're excited about what's coming forward. And good job on the numbers because again, I think documenting every little thing as far as our gas and how much mowers we use, it's going to really help you next summer when we have budget season. You can say, "Hey, we really don't need these mowers" or "We can cut back" and so forth. So I think that's really going to help on that end. So well, thank you very much as well. And I think the reason why I called it earlier was I know the upcoming new pilot programs, one of them was the Heroes Memorial Park events. It was like some pilot programs that you and I talked about, but I know Councilmember Parsley is bringing in an agenda item to recognize that as well. So thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? No notes. Go do it.
Thank you all.
All right. Next up is Agenda Item Number 29. Receive a report, hold a discussion, provide staff direction regarding a new logo and branding for the Kyle Public Library. Thank you for hanging with us.
Of course. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Wesley Scott, Library Director. And I'd like to talk to you briefly about the possibility of a new logo and branding for the library. So our current logo was created in 2015 by a library staff member to display on shirts, social media, marketing and flyers. And the city logo was also used interchangeably and more recently, more predominantly than this logo that you see in front of you. We tasked the Kyle Communications Department to create some suggestions with their expertise on fonts and colors for an updated library logo and branding to move into the future. Having a separate library logo is very common for libraries due to the all-ages of services that we offer. Vibrant, energetic, fun, clever and associable should be part of a library's logo. Logos that differ from their cities of some of our comparison cities include Austin, Buta, Cedar Park, Round Rock, San Antonio and San Marcos. So you can see that that is pretty common. So the Communications Department came up with three options to start off with for us. This is option number one. The arc is actually books opened up ever so slightly, the Kyle logo, the KPL, and then the words Kyle Public Library. This option, the characteristics are vibrant, energetic and optimistic. And this is what it would look like on a potential library card, a tote bag, and then some other promotional materials. Option two includes the water tower and the book is the base, if you didn't notice the open book there. And the KPL is bold and then the Kyle Public Library spelled out. This has characteristics of relaxed, soft, proud. There's the library card in the tote and additional promotional materials. Option three is the book provides a filigree kind of in each of the corners. Characteristics are modern, textural and bright. There it is on the card, the tote and promotional. So the staff recommended edits to option number one. We really liked it, but we asked that perhaps the KPL be taken out, removed because it seemed redundant and then maybe a brighter yellow. The font, so this is what they came up with. The font used is Adonis, which pairs well with the city standards of Montserrat body text. It is similar letter forms to Palatino, which is used for the city of Kyle logo already, but it is a little more rounded, softer and friendlier. The logo uses imagery of books that create the rising sun over the image and warm and bright atmosphere that we want to portray at our Kyle Public Library. The mark of the books translates well across overall branding since that can be used as a visual cue for the brand without even using any text inside the logo. So last Thursday at the library board meeting, the board did recommend that the logo with modifications be brought to council. So we'd like you to direct the staff to proceed with this proposed library brand and logo or feedback and direction.
I'm looking at Danielle. I figured she's coming right out with it. So Councilwoman Parsley.
I have the second one. It was so cute.
The second one, you like the...
But that's, I was like, I was just, I just had to say it. I'm sorry.
So I do like this one. And when you first brought the first one out, I just kept thinking about the yellow lettering on the bottom. It really didn't pop. So when you came back with the blue lettering, I really liked that a lot better. I kept thinking, because you had yellow on the bottom, yellow on top, it just took away from the yellow up on top, the sun, right?
I agree.
That's what I'm thinking as well. I like this one. I do like the first one with the water tower, but this one's a lot nicer. I do like this one.
I think this will look beautiful, too, on our new mobile library. We can really play up this, kind of the opportunities that we have coming up that the library will provide for our community.
I like it as well because I'm looking at it as whenever you do the library summer events, if you make t-shirts for kids, you can be able to pass those out and also the yellow card. So that could also be a staple for our city that, you know, there's different colored cards, but the yellow library card signifies our public library. So I kind of like this. I like this version.
Super.
Stand out. Motion to approve option one. Motion by the mayor, second by Councilmember Tobias. Is there discussion on the motion?
I wish we were building a second library, to be honest, but...
I think I'm back October 2nd, so...
Yeah, exactly. Any further discussion?
We'll talk about that October 2nd.
We'll discuss it later.
Visioning Workshop was a library.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'll say approve.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, Agenda Item 30. Consider directing the city manager to develop a plan to enhance events at Heroes Memorial Park by collaborating with nonprofit organizations in our community. Councilmember Parsley.
This won't take long. I just feel that, you know, we created the Heroes Memorial Park is such a beautiful park. I visit it about once a week. But I have seen that there is, it seems to me that there is a disconnect into the programming for the Heroes Memorial Park and the events that are happening in there. I know that in the past, VFW has volunteered to host events for specific dates. And I think the city should be taking over those events and asking for collaboration from these organizations. Because the thing I don't want is for the VFW to want to host an event and then we're going to have the AMVETS that want to go ahead and host. And if there is some sort of disconnect between them or other organizations that want to also participate, then there may be a challenge. So I think that it will be more organized for the city to take, not that it sounds bad, but take over and do the programming and ask for collaboration from these organizations. That's all.
I second, third and fourth that, so. Mayor Protim.
Yeah, Mike, go ahead.
No, no, you go ahead.
I just wanted to say, it's not really taking over. I think it's something we should have been doing as a city. I think that we should have been honoring 9/11 and really promoting it. I think that we, when we have holidays to honor our veterans, it's something that we should be doing as a city automatically and collaborating with all those other, you know. I just attended the 9/11 ceremony the VFW put on. There was no advertising. The numbers were really small. There was hardly anyone there.
I don't even recall being invited.
No, it was a really, no, it was, I wasn't either, so.
Yeah.
I just showed up.
They should take note of that, frankly.
Yeah, but the thing was that, you know, why are we not doing that? Because other cities are doing it and we're not. And that's one of the things I'd like to see us do is take on more of these events where we're promoting it, we're bringing more people out. 9/11 was important. I mean, we built a, we have a memorial to, you know, honor the first responders and as a city, we did nothing. We just left the park there and let somebody else do the programming. I think we need to start as a city stepping up and doing that. But that's with every event we do, you know, anytime we have something coming up, like even when we have Veterans Day or Memorial Day, we need to, as a city, make sure that we're doing our part to promote that. I mean, it's even as simple as putting the flags downtown. I'm going to say it again and I'm sorry, I don't want to make anybody mad or offend anybody, but unless I call someone, the flags don't get put up downtown. And it shouldn't be up to a council member. It should be automatic. It should be the city doing it. And the reason why is the year I wasn't here, it didn't get done. So making sure that we're as a city doing everything we can to promote what we should be promoting is important. And this isn't to yell at anyone or anything. It's just saying that we're slacking on this is all I'm saying.
So my thinking is more than just directing the city to develop a plan, I'd like to see them bring back a program schedule for Heroes Memorial Park in particular that incorporates the variety of different elements that the park represents, exactly what's being said. Is it AMVETS? Is it VFW? Is there politics involved and who gets invited and how they promote it all? The city designed it as Heroes Memorial Park for a reason. People say it's Veterans Memorial because that's what they want to call it, but that is not what it is. It is called Heroes Memorial Park that promotes many different things. And that means that we have to take ownership of the project. It does not belong to any one group. It belongs to everyone collectively, which means that we need to take the helm. So do y'all have any objections to that or how that would be handled?
No, I think the easiest way is to bring it back and let you see everything that we're going to be doing, what those events would be like, how we would program them and lay that out very publicly for the council and the community and just show you all those things and what we would do. It'll take a little bit of time to put all that together, but we can put together that slate for this coming year, reach out to these organizations and then try to figure out how do we collaborate with them to make them the best events that they can be. And I really think, as I talked to Councilmember Parsley about this, I do think the events can be a lot, you know, better. They can be bigger. They can be, reach a larger audience with the resources that the city brings and our team and the partnerships we have, we can make these events even better. So I think we're really excited about the opportunities that are there.
That was the meeting that I had with you guys the other day, bringing that up. And again, it was on your slide about Heroes Memorials Pilot Program Events and to hit on that. Because it's just not always 9/11 or Memorial Day. We also have Police Week, you know, that we need to recognize as well, including all our first responders and nurses and doctors and so forth, because that's what it's all for, not just for the military. But one of the things that I do hope that the city will look at, at the facility itself, as Bear Heiser and I were there at the Memorial Day event, it was super hot. And we, him and I kind of looked at each other like, you know, there was no tents there, water or facilities, things like that. Because again, when people come to these things, they assume that it's the city that's sponsoring this when it's another event, another organization. So maybe looking at a sound system or lighting or if we either bring some more electricity out there to provide that kind of support. But I think the restrooms being developed is a good first start. And then again, maybe in the future, we look at that parking lot that's going to be developed back there. We can add spaces for veterans, parking spaces and Purple Heart veterans. We can designate spots on that end. But overall, I think this is a great idea. If you could just bring this forward, we'll be looking forward to a calendar for next year and include Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, everybody else.
Councilman Harris.
We could also incorporate music, which that's a beautiful venue. Some symphony kind of music, you know, but not necessarily our rock bands or our country western, but some respectful music concerts in that venue would be great, especially if we enhance the sound system and some seating.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I would just like to add that the groups that have been meeting out there for these events, Memorial Day, 9/11, they've done a great job, but I think with programming and assistance from the city, we would reach more of the community and let them know this is something happening at Heroes Memorial Park. So I think it'd be more predictable because, you know, I've been reached out several times. I'd go and speak and other council members as well. But it'd be more predictable for us, like, hey, this is a, you know, a Veterans Day thing out here and we could do like, share the responsibilities as council, you know, each, all of us get involved based on availability. based on availability. Other cities do, do a lot of the programming for these parks.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to direct the city manager to develop a plan and schedule, uh, to enhance events at Heroes Memorial Park, uh, by collaborating with nonprofit organizations in our community, but assuming a primary role in the development and administration of those projects.
Second.
Events. All right. Motion by the mayor, second by Councilmember Parsley. Is there discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I, I also want to do the programming, uh, for other, uh, events as well that are throughout the city. Stuff that we, I talked about earlier about like laying the flags out, things like that.
Yeah.
Of downtown. So not just Heroes Memorial.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. All right. Motion carries seven to zero. We skipped no items. There wasn't anything from Jesse proposed to skip. So, motion to adjourn.